Standard practice. We will call this meeting regularly scheduled meeting of Atascadero City Council to order. We will begin with pledge allegiance led by myself. Please stand and join me in saluting our nation's flag. Okay, thank you. We will proceed with roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Uh, councilmember Newsom.
I received a phone call from councilmember Newsom about 20 minutes ago. She is running late and will be here probably 15 to 30 minutes late. And so the clerk will note that when she arrives.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Peak.
Here.
Uh, Mayor Protem Daris.
Here.
Mayor Borbo.
Here. All right. Well, thank you. Thank you all for those of you who are in the chamber and anybody listening online. Welcome to our meeting. We will begin this evening with our consent calendar. The consent calendar consists of items that are considered routine, non-controversial by city staff, and will be acted upon on a single action by the council unless otherwise requested by an individual council member for separate consideration. Do I have any council member wishing to ask a question or pull an item from the consent calendar? Okay, seeing none, we will see if there is any public comment on items on the consent calendar. Okay, seeing none, we will turn it back to council for a motion.
Move approval of the consent calendar.
One second.
Okay, we have a motion by councilmember Funk and a second by Mayor Protem Daris. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk.
Yes.
Councilmember Peak.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Daris.
Yes.
Mayor Borbo.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you. All right, now we will proceed to updates from the city manager, but our city manager is at the International City Managers Association Conference. So filling in is the assistant or the assistant city manager, Laura Christensen.
Thank you. Thank you, council. You'll do it? All right, great. Just a quick recap, this weekend was the bovine classic and the Zuboo. Attendance was high. The events were fantastic. Zuboo this year was Friday night and Saturday night. There was dancing, costume contests and fun. Attendance for both nights compared to last year was up over 17% and year over year, and that brought in an extra 200 people this year. So that's fantastic turnout for the zoo. And then bovine classic hit the road on Saturday at 8:00 AM with Atascadero Police Department's 55 Chevy. In the start off, there were 625 cyclists from across California, along with some international visitors as well. The event was the entire day with an award ceremony that kicked off at 12:30 and festivities in the sunken gardens until 6:00. They had vendors, food trucks and live music. So it was really great to see everyone here and enjoying our city. Trunk or treat actually happened in the sunken gardens on Sunday as well. And once again, that was well attended and we appreciate ABC Church and all of their churches for bringing their event to the downtown. Uh, Halloween community happenings, just so that everybody knows if you're looking for something to do on Friday, they're kicking off tomorrow, October 29th from 3:00 to 5:30. There'll be trick or treating at each booth for farmer's market. There was live music and magic with Andy Morris. And if you come dress in your Halloween costume, you'll actually for extra prize opportunities. You can swing by the manager's booth to spin the prize wheel for everyone in costume. And starting at four, there's a free pumpkin decorating. So pumpkins will be provided along with all the supplies to decorate the pumpkins. With, uh, it looks like you'll get to decorate with temporary tattoos. And it's free to attend and bring your wallet to stock up on all that fresh produce. The A-Town Halloween Block Party is happening this year on the 31st from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. That's trick or treating in the downtown with participating shops from 5:00 to 7:00 PM. There's lots of different locations that will be hosting activities. There's a costume contest at Gatherings Thrift, DJ and costumes at Poisoned Apple and Ancient Owl. There's a hay bale maze on Entrada and a whole lot more. So if you're looking something for to do on Halloween, come on down to the A-Town Halloween Block Party. And also don't forget, this Friday night is a home football game. It's the orange and gray Fridays. So there's Greyhound pregame deals downtown where you're orange and gray to receive discounts. Participating restaurants are Barley and Boar, Cielo, Streetside Ale House, Colony Sandwich Company, Wild Fields Brew House, A-Town Chop Shop, Kula Hawaiian Kitchen and Wintery and Decades Hi-Fi Lounge. So remember, wear that orange and gray and enjoy the downtown. Let's see. Oh, also Halloween, just to continue that theme, some community happenings, The Haunt. That's now through November 1st. Visit thehauntatascadero.com to find out more information on that. And then there's also the Halloween Spooktacular Lights and Sites. That's through Halloween night and that's at 7720 Cortez Avenue. Thank you again to one of our retired city employees, Mark Russo, for putting on this event every year. Yeah, also this weekend, Dia de los Muertos at the Central Coast Zoo. That will be November 1st from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. There'll be themed crafts, cultural exhibits, special guests and live music with DJ Rama, as long as well as delicious eats from quesadilla gorilla will be available for purchase. To find out more, please visit centralcoastzoo.org. Coming up is the 2025 Holiday Boutique. This is always a favorite. That will be at Pavilion on the Lake. That is November 8th from 10:00 AM to 3:00 PM. It's a unique shopping opportunity to get some local made crafts and goods. And there'll be over 90 vendors to shop from. There'll be a Veterans Day Ceremony at the Atascadero Veterans Memorial Foundation is hosting it at their Faces, at the Faces of Freedom Memorial. That's November 11th. From beginning at 11:00 AM, excuse me. The ceremony will consist of a flyover, colors presented by the Vietnam veterans and accompanied by pipes and drums. The speaker this year will be a Vietnam veteran. The coanist will also be providing a barbecue lunch following the ceremony and proceeds from that lunch goes towards maintenance of the memorial. Also, a reminder of more upcoming events in the month of November is the Colony Days Parade and the annual community celebration. That will be Saturday, November 15th from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. Following the parade, there'll be the Atascadero Fall Fest Carnival throughout the sunken gardens. And that weekend is also the Fall Fest, which is free admission. That's in the downtown sunken gardens. And that's November 14th through 16th. On Friday, the event is from 4:00 to 10:00 PM. On Saturday, the event is 12:00 to 10:00 PM. And on Sunday, again, the event is 12:00 to 10:00 PM. And that's following the Colony Days Parade. Just a quick update on the Santa Lucia pavement. The paving on the roadway segment between Portola and Cascabel Road is now complete. So the improvements there includes new edges and driveway aprons. Paving began today on the roadway segment between Cascabel and Laurel. And that's expected to be completed by the end of this week. Please, if you're driving in the area, make sure you're planning for travel delays. Those could be up for from 15 to 20 minutes while the work is underway in the area. And then once that section is complete, travel delays will be greatly reduced. So we should hopefully see better traffic moving through Santa Lucia next week. And pending favorable weather conditions, the project's on track to be completed by Christmas. So that'll be a great Christmas present to everyone in the area. And just as a reminder, there's information on the city's website regarding the tree and shrub maintenance zone, four feet from the roadway edge and 14 feet from the roadway going up into the air. Please make sure if you have shrubs or trees on your property that you are maintaining that maintenance zone. And Public Works is getting phone calls on those. So please, please, please make sure you trim. If you have any questions, please let me know. And as always, information on city and city sponsored events and the zoo and things to do in the city, you can find at visitatascadero.com. And for all city related business, please check out our website at atascadero.org. Thank you, council.
All right. Thank you, Laura. Does any member of the council have questions? Mayor Protem Daris.
Thank you. I'm sure by now everybody has heard and probably seen pictures of the utility poles that were taken down. Can you give us an update on what that caused, what it's going to take to fix and how long and everything we need to know about it? Thank you.
Sure, I will let both our police chief, Suttles, and our Public Works Director, DeBar, speak on that.
Uh, city council, thank you very much for that question. Yes, that was a very exciting call. When it first came out, it was about 9:30 yesterday in the morning. Uh, eventually originally it came out that there was a, uh, some power lines down. And then that's not necessarily an unusual call to receive. However, when you, uh, when I started getting pictures back to my phone while I'm sitting in my office and I see that there were a total, I believe, uh, the final count, I believe, was about nine power poles that had been, had fallen into the roadway with all the, uh, the lines down as well. You can imagine that, um, that for me, uh, you know, took it to a different level. Cause now you're talking about, uh, something that's, uh, it's already dangerous enough to hear power lines in the street, but for nine power poles to fall into the roadway, especially on a, uh, a four lane highway. I mean, that, that is an extremely dangerous situation. We were, in my opinion, very lucky. No cars at 9:30 in the morning were in that stretch of roadway. And this is almost two blocks of the length. Uh, that's amazing to me and no pedestrians. So nobody was hurt. I think that the only vehicle that was struck was a parked vehicle and it suffered relatively minor damage. So, uh, it could have been, and I know that this maybe sounds a bit cliche, but it could have been a lot worse. Uh, I think that the worst that we had was a simple fact that, uh, we were inconvenienced with traffic for quite some time. So that took place, you know, uh, 09:30 in the morning and we know crews are out there working and cleaning and fixing late into the night. There were, there was, uh, you know, when, when something like that first happens, there's a lot of people who respond, fire department, police department. We had a lot of different agencies out there, the CHP and the, uh, ASH police came out and helped us. And a lot of that is because, you know, uh, we know that there's a lot to figure out. You know, where did this start? Where does it end? How far north? How far south? What does this affect? You know, how much, you know, what exactly is, are we dealing with here? Once we figure out what we're dealing with, we obviously know what we want to accomplish. And that's to get traffic flowing and clean up, to provide a safe environment for everybody. You know, so therefore what, when we know that, we start asking ourselves, what resources do we need to get to our objective? And quite honestly, there was a lot of resources that were needed, you know, for something like that. So we had to get all those, uh, those people mo- uh, mobilized and moving. Um, and we needed to shut down traffic and to do all that took quite a bit. And we always start big. We've shut down an entire ECR, both north and south. We shut down a lot of the side streets. We should, I mean, businesses were affected by this because people were not able to get to certain businesses. And, uh, out of the, you know, uh, the sake of safety, we kept that road closed until we knew what we were dealing with. Then it turned out that we weren't necessarily dealing with power lines more so than communication lines. Most of those poles were owned by AT&amp;T. Uh, and so that's good news because it didn't affect, uh, very much. There was very little power interruptions at all in the area. I believe I was told, uh, some street lights and things of that nature. But we're not talking about major outages that you might've thought would have come from that type of accident. So eventually we were able to get the, uh, south, the southbound lanes opened. We were trying to get northbound and southbound lanes open, but it was, it wasn't going to be able to happen in a safe manner. So we opted, uh, the south line, the southbound lanes were already unobstructed. So we left those open. Uh, at that time, people then were able to get to those businesses, uh, that were at least on the west side. So we apologize for any inconvenience to those businesses, but we wanted to make sure that safety was, uh, safety was our, our main concern there. Um, as far as the cause, uh, there was an oversized, uh, uh, trailer. There was a vehicle towing an oversized load. It was a module home being transported. And they, uh, caught a line and, uh, and once one started, it was a domino effect. I think a lot of people believe that, you know, this vehicle snagged a line and unknowingly kept driving and then pulled all nine down. But it, that appears to be that it was a domino effect. One went and then those other, uh, others followed. That person stayed on scene, gave a statement. We were able to, to conduct our investigation. And, um, and again, I'll close with, I'm just very, very, um, relieved that there was no injuries. I think it could have been, uh, certainly with that much damage, definitely could have been some injuries. So I'm really, really happy that I can report there were not.
Not on, now it's on. For people pulling something, a load that's going to be particularly tall. So was, was this load taller than it should have been? Or were the wires hanging lower than they should have been? Or was there just a combination of both? Or what, what, what is considered to be the cause of this besides the obvious?
And the answer to that is I don't know yet. And the reason why is because we've taken a lot of the information. We've done a lot of measurements and I'm waiting for those reports. You know, the officer needs time to put all that together. Uh, and basically, uh, as you said, that's exactly what we're, we're concerned, not concerned. We're, um, uh, questioning as well, was it too high or were the lines too low? I don't know the answer to that right now. Um, I know it was an oversized load. So that's my first, you know, you know, being the, uh, the natural detective that I am, that makes me question that first, but we want to verify before we lay blame.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it.
I might just, um, add real quick. I want to give kudos to, um, AT&amp;T and PG&E because, uh, this happened, as the chief said, around 9:30. Uh, by eight o'clock this morning, they had all those poles replaced and the lines up. And they were working on cleaning up and getting the lateral lines done across El Camino. And, uh, by, by around midday, they were all done. So it's pretty impressive knowing that they had to cut out concrete, pull out the old, other, the old poles and, uh, put new poles on.
Thank, thank you, director. Yes, thank you. That I think was a key thing. So thank you for that. Any other questions for the city manager? Um, I did want to comment the bovine classic. I did attend the starting of that and it was very impressive how many people. Cause when I got there, I don't know, quarter till, there's looked like there were 200. And then by eight o'clock, there were 600 bicyclists just materializing out of everywhere, I guess. But kudos to Terry Banish, um, for helping, you know, get those kind of events to our city. This is the fourth year, I think, and these folks frequently spend one or two nights in our hotels locally and they eat at our restaurants, et cetera. It's a great addition to our community. So appreciate you helping to bring those kind of events, uh, here. Okay, with that, we will proceed to our, the community forum. Community forum is designed for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda, but over which the council has jurisdiction. Speakers are limited to three minutes. We would ask that you state your name for the record. And I have to note that the Brown Act prohibits the city council from discussing items not on the agenda. So we cannot have any in-depth discussion of anything people might bring up during community forum. We can at our discretion, ask a question of staff or ask staff to get with a speaker afterwards. And community forum is limited to 30 minutes, after which we can either extend it or postpone the rest of the speakers to the end of the meeting. So with that, if you would like to speak at community forum, please approach the podium. And, uh, please don't wait for the next, for the speaker ahead of you to finish. Go ahead and line up if you would. All right. Thank you. First speaker. I feel your face.
Uh, good evening, Mayor Borbo and council members. My name is Jennifer Adams. I'm the CEO of Lumina Alliance. We're a nonprofit organization that serves victims of sexual assault and domestic violence throughout San Luis Obispo County. I'm here tonight because October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month and just wanted to share a little bit about what Lumina Alliance has been up to. Um, I do want to start by recognizing the support of the city of Atascadero and this council. Uh, one of our two emergency shelters is located here in Atascadero. The city was instrumental in the purchase of that property and has over the years supported its upkeep. So we are very grateful for that. That house has been there for 25 years now. So, and lots and lots of families have moved through it successfully. Um, I also want to just thank and recognize Mayor Borbo was on my board of directors when we were Rise, which was prior to the merger that created Lumina Alliance. And I also want to recognize and thank councilmember Susan Funk for her work with, um, HSOC for the Housing Oversight Council, uh, Housing Homeless Services Oversight Council. Lumina Alliance houses about 130 people a year in our shelters and our transitional housing. And, um, the affordable housing is a barrier for lots of our families to be able to move on and, and find safety in their lives. So it's a very important issue for us and we appreciate the work there. So for over, uh, 40 years, Lumina Alliance has been a steadfast support of survivors of sexual assault and intimate partner violence and their loved ones. This past year, we answered 2,800 calls on our 24 hour crisis line, which was a 33% increase, um, over the year before. We housed about 210 people, half of which were children. Our mission is to empower those impacted, um, through innovative advocacy, healing and prevention programs. We provide a 24 hour crisis line, advocacy and accompaniment, legal referrals, emergency shelters, transitional housing, self-sufficiency services, individual and group therapy and a comprehensive prevention program. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And this year, we're shining a light on the resilience of survivors and the often overlooked realities of intimate partner violence in our community. While anyone can experience domestic violence, some groups, including undocumented individuals, transgender people and those living with disabilities, face unique barriers to safety and support. This month, we reaffirm our commitment to ensuring that every survivor is seen, heard and empowered. Together, we're illuminating pathways to a future where all survivors have access to resources and the support they need to heal. Please remember, if you or anyone you know is experiencing sexual or intimate partner violence and needs help, to please call our 24 hour line at 805-545-888-8888 and speak to one of our confidential advocates. In closing, I just want to, on behalf of Lumina Alliance's Board of Directors, staff and volunteers, thank all of you and everyone in the community for doing what they can to create a safe, thriving and equitable community. Thank you.
Thank you, Jenny. And I want to thank you for the services you do provide to residents of Atascadero, both victims of domestic violence and sexual assault and the work you do with our police department, that is, is helpful in helping prosecute those crimes.
Chief Suttles did a great job today at the League of Women Voters Forum with the other chiefs and the sheriff. And I got to hear that and it was, I was proud living here in Atascadero. It was great representation.
Thank you very much. And if I may just take one second, uh, I also wanted to, uh, we, today's topic was on the undocumented immigrants. And, and, and really the message that we're trying to send is that, uh, we are an agency and all the agencies here within this county are here to provide a service to our, all of our community. And whether they're documented or undocumented, our goal is to, uh, make people as comfortable as possible calling us when they need help. So when you're talking about some of these organs, uh, some of these groups that may feel, um, not comfortable calling, uh, law enforcement, I want them to know that, uh, we strive as local law enforcement within this county, uh, to, to be able to provide that service to everybody without judgment and without fear of us, uh, you know, uh, asking about their documentation or whatever. That, that's not our concern. Our concern is safety.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Okay. Uh, next speaker, please.
Oh, city council. My name is Linda Ikeda. Thanks so much for having a forum where we can speak about our concerns. The wireless industry, however, wants to take away this voice from us concerning wireless infrastructure. Last Friday, Friday, I sent you all an email about writing a comment on the FCC, Federal Communications Commission site, opposing docket 25276 that takes away all of our citizen rights, citizen rights regarding wireless infrastructure, allowing the wireless industry total control of cell tower placement and without our say. So the first, um, email I had sent has this picture. It's a picture of several homes and there's a maxi cell tower five homes apart. And that's too much radiation. That's not okay. Uh, today I sent you an email with a link to the Children's Health Defense article, which you have in your hand. It is this one. You can quickly oppose this if you believe in keeping our right to talk. Quickly oppose this, um, this docket. Automatically sends emails to our federal representatives and FCC commissioners. This is, um, very important since the public is just learning that cell towers need to be responsibly placed. Otherwise, people get hurt and sick. This has happened often around cell towers. In Massachusetts, 17 children and adults became so sick from a close range cell tower that their board of health deemed their homes uninhabitable. We need to preserve local control in the face of wireless companies shamelessly prioritizing profits over people. They appear to lack any concern for the harm they caused and use lawsuits to get their way. Everyone listening, please share this idea widely. Contact all your electeds and write the FCC. A fast way to do that is to go to the Children's Health Defense, which is the article I gave you, Children's Health Defense website and type in FCC moves to silence communities and flood the country with cell towers. This just takes a few minutes and a few clicks. Again, go to Children's Health Defense and type in the search engine, FCC moves to silence communities and flood the country with cell towers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hello. I'm Janine Jacobs. I'm on the same subject. Uh, as you can see, we are, we have adequate digital, um, projects here. We have this screen. We have, you know, our cell phones at 4G. We didn't even need to go to 5G. Then they're going to go to 6G. And my friend here said that when they put in towers, they get approval and then right after the approval, they raise the intensity by a lot, large amount. Uh, so they're not really cognizant of our safety. They only want to get it to the point where they can actually, um, control crowds with your cell phone. And so I think most of it is about surveillance. We did not need this. We do not need more towers. And now we are learning that they planted, I saw they planted a tower, like 20 feet away from where I had my headlights brushed. And, uh, those guys could get leukemia from that. And then they put a cell tower here at Benito. Within the, it was, I'd say it was 100 feet. But it, they're not supposed to put it in within 1,400 feet. So they're, they're being negligent. Who is controlling these people? Have you, do you have oversight over where they install these? Did they have a permit? You know, 1,400 feet is, is very conservative when it comes to safety. Uh, they only last about 10 years. So here we have, he will, we will have, if this gets approved through FCC, we will have only the United States government to speak to FCC in Washington DC as a single source of communication. You will not have any jurisdiction under this new, new law. So, um, the public won't either, but it's very especially important to you because you won't be able to have say, have any say in it. We do not want to centralize our power in a, in a federal way or a global way. And these people with the tech, big tech are associated with world, global government. WEF, WHO. We want to stay away from that. We want to be decentralized. So we have more communication of what we need and what we can manage. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, next speaker, please.
Good evening, Council and Staff. Jeff Oslin, resident. Excuse me, in this beautiful city called Atascadero. Some of the staff and some of you folks on council are friends, are very good friends. But I want to keep true to my word of always keeping everybody here honest and informed. So I would start with, the five of you up there are elected by our citizens to make hard decisions. And our last city council meeting, we had a council member saying they were not sure about making a very hard decision. You're elected to make a very hard decision. That's what you're in office for. So I would hope that in the future, you can remember that. The other one is when you're going to run a poll after the fact. I think it should be done before, if you want a straw poll. I don't think it does well to run on a very tough thing after the fact, especially when it's not localized to our city. And you might get eighty percent or ninety percent or whatever in favor, but I just say it that way. When you come to cannabis, I would think that you probably have sixty plus percent in this city that would vote for it. And it only takes approximately fifteen hundred valid signatures to put anything on a ballot that would cost the city some money and not necessarily have things crafted the way our city would want it. So I think at the end of last meeting, it should have been done a little differently to where our city should have spent the money one way or another to craft an ordinance to either put on the ballot or a poll to see which way it makes sense. Because right now, if there's a petition drive, how it's written could be voted on and passed in, and we would lose a lot of control, especially with cannabis. So I hope you take that with great consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. I don't see anybody else approaching. Last call. Okay, well, Community Forum is now closed, and we will move on to Management Reports. Item G one, Discussion of Our Draft 2045 Atascadero General Plan. And I will turn this discussion over to Mr. Phil Dunsmore, our Community Development Director.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. We are proud to present to you what we call Authentic Atascadero. Thank you. My microphone was facing the wrong direction. I could hear myself, but you couldn't hear me. Here we are. So proud to present to you the document, the draft document tonight. And we're going to give some background. We're going to tell you where we are with this process, where we're going to go with this process. And I'm going to keep underlining the word "general" tonight as well. Because what this is, is even though they call it a policy document, it's really generalized goals for the future of the city. And this doesn't mean these things are going to happen. It might mean these things should happen, and it might basically lead to things that we can implement later. So in terms of where we are today, I'll give you a few updates. Essentially, I'd like to go through the draft plan. It's only been out there for a few weeks for the public to look at. We've gotten some great comments. We had a great open house last Tuesday, followed by a Planning Commission hearing. Had good turnout at the open house. It was really nice. Got a lot of good comments. I'll also talk about the next steps and where we're going. So in a complete sort of package, here's where we've been. It's been a couple of years now. We started out with a lot of outreach in an entire time period that we called Vision for the Future. Then we went on to the second series, which was exploring the possibilities. Then we went on to another series of open houses. Now we're in that final phase. We've really culminated to that phase for getting that plan out there. There's been a lot of online interactive surveys that have produced what you see before you tonight. We've had a lot of in-person surveys as well. What it's resulted in is not only the land use policies, but we've got the safety policies. We've got things even as detailed as noise policies. So we began in the winter of 2023 with a whole background report that we call Existing Conditions. We went on to do a very comprehensive community engagement in the summer of 2023. That was at the Lake Park and Pavilion and several other locations. And then our council and our community created what we call True North Statements, which are really visioning statements. Then we took those a step further later on to create the Guiding Principles. Then we brought that back to the community to create a set of alternatives. Now, at this point, we've taken those alternatives and actually created the policy and language and all of the final items that you see before you tonight. I'm going to skip through some of this because a lot of this is really just repeating what was on the previous slide. I didn't know this was in here. But essentially, what we've done is go through a series of different workshops over time. This slide actually throws me off. I'm just going to skip that one altogether. Sorry about that. So what I'm going to talk about is Authentic Atascadero, the general plan in which you have before you tonight. There's actually nine chapters. Now, keep in mind, several of these chapters are required chapters by the state of California, like the land use chapter, for example, the economic development chapter, the housing element. The housing element is a very separate one. That one is one that is on its own track. It is actually going to be pulled into this general plan, but we haven't updated that. That runs on its own eight-year cycle, and that will again be updated in a few years, but kind of runs on its own, even though it's a part of the general plan. Mobility, which is really circulation, recreation and open space that covers our parks, our trails, public services and infrastructure, key element that covers things like our wastewater treatment plant and even some of our other infrastructure. And then we have our safety and emergency preparedness element. That will cover things like fire risk, flood risk, and things like that. Now, what I'd like to read to you is a vision statement that we had created for this general plan. And it's basically, Atascadero provides opportunities for all residents and business owners to thrive. Our community-focused culture pursues investments in land use strategies that create a diversity of housing types, supports local businesses, improves all mobility modes, and respects our natural environment. Collective community actions improve conditions for current and future generations. Now, another section we have in here is called the Big Moves. And really, way to summarize that is, these are the big, and I don't want to say a scary word, but changes that we would like to see in our community. And in general, this general plan does not change our community. It really stays true to what the name of the document is, which is Authentic Atascadero. It stays true to maintaining the character of our community, especially our west side and our rural neighborhoods. It stays true to what Atascadero is made of. It's a local place. It's a place that prides itself on our quality of life. So these big moves, they represent key land use objectives and strategies that help advance the True North Statements and the vision and guiding principles in the community's desires. A lot of what's in this plan is what we've heard, not only from the city council, but from the community at large. And we've really tried to include that wherever we can. Again, creating a mix of housing types, attracting new industries and higher wage jobs. A lot of what I'm going to be talking about tonight is really getting that jobs-housing balance to be improved. Right now, we're still a bedroom community. We're probably not going to change much from that, but we need to have at least enough of a job base here where our children can stay here and work if they want to, where we can avoid having to drive great distances to find employment, where we can actually go out for the evening here and have a good time. And I think we've actually made great strides in that, as we are over the last decade. And then improving access, improving our network, our road system, our trail system. And then continuing to be able to address public infrastructure needs, be able to finance the public infrastructure, and be able to keep up with development. That is a critical piece of it. And lastly, ensuring fiscal sustainability. Now, there is a component here that we don't have for you yet. Keep in mind, we're still going to be taking comments on this draft plan for the next few months. But there's also a fiscal portion that evaluates how this general plan and its policies affect our fiscal sustainability for the future. Now, one of the key things everyone loves to focus on is zoning. What can I do with my property? What is the land use? What is going on? It's a major component, but that's not the entire general plan. It's definitely a significant piece of it. And as we look through and talk about some of the policies in land use tonight, keep in mind, again, these are land use policies, and they're different than zoning policies. And I often like to try and describe the two. The general plan sets the tone and is very general and visionary, while the zoning actually implements the general plan and actually creates the, I'll call it municipal code, the policy, the actual thing that we shall do. Whereas the general plan is more along the lines of, we should do this if we can. And the municipal code says, we will do this, and here's how we're going to do it, and here's the details. So again, we're doing the general plan now, and the zoning follows that and implements this general plan. So I'm going to get into a little bit of what land use is, really what we have instead of actual land use categories. We're now going to be calling place types, and it's a softer way to describe each land use. It's basically defining the primary uses of the land and what we expect the character of those areas to be like. What we've done is we've reviewed the city's commitment to concentrate development where utilities already exist. We don't have the ability to dramatically expand our infrastructure, such as our wastewater infrastructure. So instead, the zoning's built around what's there. It reflects what's there in the built environment and tries to build upon that. We've also introduced a new zone called Innovation and Flex. Now, it's not brand new. It essentially replaces a lot of what is already commercial zoning, what is already commercial service and commercial park, and blends those two into something that reflects the trends that are there today. The roll-up door spaces, the light industrial. We also, with this general plan, want to continue moral road as an office corridor where we encourage medical offices to relocate to and basically strengthen that corridor as an office corridor that it's already becoming. And then, looking back to downtown to continue intensifying the downtown as a place where we have entertainment, we have restaurants, we have mixed use, we have people living downtown. And the big shift that we've seen in the downtown just over the last five years with people living downtown has really accelerated that vibrancy. And this general plan wants to continue that by incentivizing ways to do that, introducing additional density, and introducing additional ways to, and essentially make that happen. And then, lastly, refining uses in our industrial areas to focus on employment opportunities, lower-intensity manufacturing, and sort of those indoor service-related uses. Because our industrial areas in Atascadero are so small and so limited, we do really underline the word indoor. We don't have a ton of area for outdoor land uses, outdoor storage. Those are probably the more controversial land uses, and that's why they're controversial. There's such limited space. It's very difficult to waste it with land uses that do not produce things for the community. Here's the draft map. I'm going to get into greater detail with this as we have questions later on because it's hard to see all of the land uses on this particular scale of map. In reality, it's very similar to what we have today. It preserves the entire west side rural areas as they are today. It focuses commercial along specific nodes where there's intersections, such as the Highway forty one and El Camino intersection, the San Anselmo and El Camino intersection, and the Del Rio intersection. And then to the south at the Santa Rosa intersection, those are the areas where you see the splashes of red color. The red color on the map is essentially a commercial zone. Whereas the more, I guess on this map, they're almost a pink color, is a mixed-use designation, which today is commercial. And today, we allow residential above commercial in those commercial zones, but we're actually being more directional about that and actually putting in place mixed-use zones where we can really be definitive about that. And then a little bit on there, you can see the Innovation Flex zones in the bluish colors along El Camino and a couple other portions of the city. And we can talk about that in greater detail later on. Economic development is a key component of any general plan, any community. There is an entire section that provides policies. It talks about economic development. It really, the idea is it's there to facilitate a full range of goods and services in our community, attracting new development, coordinating economic development efforts with local businesses and organizations, and really trying to take a long-range look at the city's fiscal condition. And what can we do from a land use perspective? What can we do from a policy perspective? And what can we do from an implementation perspective to continue to enhance our fiscal condition so that we can continue to provide the services we need and the infrastructure that we need to maintain a healthy community? Mobility is simply circulation. How we connect these areas, a critical key piece. Circulation and land use sort of go hand in hand. If you have rich land uses that have multifamily, that have commercial areas, you've got to have good access. You've got to have good transportation. And you've got to have multimodal transportation. You've got to have pedestrian and bicycle connections, and you have to have them safe. Now, in recent months, I won't even say recent years, but just in recent months, our downtown has dramatically changed from a mobility standpoint. And there's additional areas in Atascadero where we can continue to modernize our mobility and enhance the vehicle connections and enhance the pedestrian connections. We also need to continue maintaining an adequate supply of off-street parking, particularly in commercial, industrial, and higher-density residential areas. And we have to keep going after funding to prioritize the Highway one-on-one interchange improvements in Atascadero. It's one thing we were not blessed with in the nineteen fifties is a freeway that bisected our town. And today, we still have the same overpasses that were built when that freeway was originally constructed. And as we move forward through time, those overpasses continue to be significant constraints to how we can continue to develop our community, how we can improve density, how we can improve our economy. So that will be something that we will need to continue to focus on as we move forward. And lastly, we need places to play. We need park and recreation facilities. We desperately need expansion of soccer fields, things like that. And there's certain ratios that we expect to put in place for parks as we develop additional residential areas. And as we move forward with new subdivisions and new housing, blending these things in and ensuring that we grow our parks and our natural resources at a rate that matches our population. Right now, we're at a good level, but in the future, we're going to continue needing to expand these areas. Luckily, in Atascadero, we have a lot of natural resources that we can take advantage of, the areas such as the Three Bridges Trail, the areas along the Salinas River, and our areas along our creeks. And again, this particular section also takes a look at encouraging the conservation and preservation of historical and architectural significance, which we have a lot of, such as the building we're in tonight, such as the printery, such as our historic homes that we have in our community. Those are absolute gems. And there's policies here that further their preservation. Probably one of the more important things, too, is the public services that we provide. And there is policies here that help to ensure that new development can help to pay for its fair share of these infrastructure, these services, and that we have it keeping up with our development. A big project going on now that we've heard a lot about, of course, is our water reclamation facility, master plan, and how that responds to long-term growth. That has to be done if we're going to envision the completion of this general plan. A very significant thing for Atascadero and for any community is having safety and emergency preparedness. We are in an area that has a substantial amount of very high fire zones. We have a large area of our city that's under what we call our wild and urban interface, our WOELA area. And we have a series of new policies that are being proposed in this general plan that speak to that. The safety element is a critical piece. It's a state-required piece. The safety element is a critical piece. It's a state required piece. And our fire team and our police team have helped us develop policies that respond to the next twenty years in that endeavor and will help us implement future code changes and future ideas that will move this along. There's the old fire station there. And as you know, we're well under our way for planning a new fire station to replace it. And so that's something we don't have to adopt policies on because it's already underway, but there's certainly a lot of other policies here we should look at. And responds to flood issues, it responds to noise issues and every type of emergency that could occur in our community. Let's talk about next steps. Where are we? So tonight we're here at the council. We last week, as I mentioned, we had a great open house workshop. We had our planning commission hearing. Right now we're moving full steam ahead with our consultant team to work on the environmental impact report. It's kind of nice. We don't have that with you here tonight because it's a big document that would take us a long time to review. So it's good to look at that, at this draft document separately and then look at the EIR separately at a later date. We expect we'll have an administrative draft for staff to look at in the next month or two. And we expect to have a public review draft at the first of the year, we hope. And then that will have a specific, its own specific public review period before the council gets to view that and take action on it as well. Additionally, we're waiting for the draft fiscal analysis. We should have an administrative draft of that before the end of the year and have a public review draft early next year to look at. In terms of public review of those documents, we expect that to be basically early of next year. And we will do additional community engagement as those things come out. DIR has its own state mandated outreach that we'll have to do, its own, what we call a scoping hearing, thank you, as we do all of that. And then finally, the grand finale, as we call it, adoption. And that'll include certification of the EIR and adoption of the general plan. Can't wait for that day. That's coming soon. It'll be here before you know it. But tonight, I think it's really key to understand we we're here to take comments on the draft. We can continue to amend it. There's still time to do that. And as always, I want to leave you too with the project website. But you don't just have to to go to the website to look at the general plan. You can also come into our office. You can talk to us. We can even print you pages of this document. We have a printed out version at the counter for you to review. There's one in the public library. Now, I will tell you that the document is intended to be an online document. It's its own webpage. So when it's printed, it's not as fun to look at as it is online, but we do have it printed and we do have it available like that. And I'm going to end it there. I'm going to go back to that page, leave it there and basically be ready to answer the council's questions and then look forward to hearing from the public as well.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dunsmore. I am going to ask you to do a little more explaining about something. You know, you mentioned zoning and of course there's a whole separate zoning ordinance that implements these things. But the guidance we provide through the general plan is is crucial, foundationally you might say. But I think for members of the public, zoning is probably the most important aspect of the general plan update. In particular, folks wondering, okay, how how does this affect, you know, my property or my neighborhood? As well as, you know, concerns it might have for the overall city. And so what I'm wondering is, could you provide an overview for folks? I think we in the council have talked about this a little before. We are probably going to have a lot of questions. But what are the most significant changes in either the types of zoning or specific, maybe not specific, but areas of the city that would be most impacted by changes in this draft as currently written? In other words, some specific neighborhoods, you know, we talked about the triangle area and then northern El Camino Real in particular.
Yes. And I think I'd be a bit shy about using the word impacted. But there are areas that are being proposed to change a little bit. In fact, I have some detailed maps I can go through and show you some close up images. I'm going to start by just really quickly, just to help answer that question, all of these different colors here. This is our sort of description of all of the zones, starting with the rural and then the highest density multifamily in those brown and beige colors. And then of course, the the more red colors and purple colors from mixed use and downtown mixed use. But let's take a look at a couple of those areas. For example, north El Camino Real. There's an area here around San Benito Road, just south of Del Rio and north of San Anselmo on the easterly side of El Camino Real that today is rural residential. It's our lowest density residential, yet it's along an Artero Road. It has wastewater service. It has sewer service and is directly across the street from an area that is zoned essentially industrial. It's commercial park. So that zoning is sort of a opposite of what a typical city plan would want to see. This is where you would want to see a higher density along an Archo Road. This is where you would want to see additional services and additional things happening. So that is a pretty substantial change from what's there today. Now, does that mean that area is going to change in the next five or 10 years? Not likely because it's already developed out with single family homes. It's under separate ownerships. And these things would have to evolve very, very slowly. There already is apartments being built north of San Benito Road, the Emerald Ridge Apartments. And so this is simply continuing a similar zoning to the south of that. So there's one area. The other thing that's changing a little bit in multiple areas is this innovation slash flex zone. And that's the bluish or purplish color up there you see. And that essentially that replaces what today is either commercial service or commercial park. And some of the areas that are under public zoning are also changing to that. Because public zoning is more reflective of schools, a fire station, police station. It's very challenging to have a publicly zoned property that's privately owned. So that reflects that change. So that's a distinction.
Before you leave that map, could you go back to that for a sec? Could you explain to the public in particular, the you explained the brown, I'll call it brown. Could you explain the orange?
Those two colors are, the brown is a medium density multifamily residential. And the orange color is low density multifamily residential. And the actual number of units per acre would actually be decided by the zoning, but in general, those numbers are twenty four units per acre in the medium density residential and twelve units per acre in the low density. Five to twelve is actually how we have it scaled in our current plan now. So certain areas could be a lot lower based on how you zone them when you implement your zoning ordinance.
Thank you. I just wanted that basic. I will actually have some more questions about that later, but thank you for that. I want to turn to my colleagues. You know, this, we only do a general plan update about every twenty, twenty five years. This is a big deal. And we've had an opportunity to look a few pre few times previously provide general guidance to staff on this, but now we're getting down to where you know, this is what it's going to look like. So council members may have a lot of questions. I only ask that you, you know, be succinct and get to the question very quickly because I think we might have a lot of them and we'll have some substantial public input. So I'll start on my left, Councilmember Peak.
Yeah. Innovation Flex is an important, I think, you know, five years ago when I was looking for my roll up, we ended up finding one well, six, seven years ago. And it was like ants on a popsicle on the sidewalk when there's, when it came open because there was one in all of the town that was available for lease. So I think the Innovation Flex addition, especially along areas like where you're switching or we're switching traditional commercial zoning like this area or even down down south along where you might see coast hills, blast and brew, where the old waste management office was. I think that's a great area for that. And I do like that zoning a lot also over by guest house and the co-op story labs. It's just a great place for it. My one, my one question would be along Ramona Road with those, those where we got the Church of Latter Day Saints going up towards the city owned property that is red where the old truck dealership was, the used truck dealership. That whole row, you have Apple Colony back there with fifty some odd. I don't even know how many houses are back there. Wouldn't it be better if potentially that area? I guess my question would be, to make it succinct, is shouldn't we be prioritizing a buffer of mixed use along areas that are buffered with homes? Because light industrial could be, you know, anything from roasting coffee beans to a welder that's making artwork in his shop to so many different things that I think a quiet residential neighborhood like Apple Valley that might appreciate a buffer of a little bit more housing and lighter lighter commercial uses mainly offices, maybe little coffee shop, some houses. Kind of a mixture of things. So I'm curious why the city chose to move that. I mean, where the staff was thinking Innovation Flex there. So I think in early planning in twenty twenty three, it was thought that Innovation Flex would include some housing element. And I'm not sure if that's a state thing with that zoning. But it seems like having more availability in Innovation Flex for loft space for you think like, you know, creative spaces with apartments above, not traditional mixed use where it's necessarily restaurants with or retail with with housing, but like, you know, just curious if Innovation Flex cannot have any housing element is my my first question.
We are desperately seeking areas where we have additional light industrial, additional additional job base in the city. But when we look at this west side area that's right up to the housing areas here, we have heard a lot of community comments that say maybe that's not the best land use for it. But rather than change the Innovation Flex zone and allow residential in it, it might be best to take some of these areas and selectively turn them to mixed use, which is a ground floor commercial use, which allows some residential either in the rear or above based on how we zone it. And that might be the best use for this particular location. And again, that's at the council's pleasure, but I think introducing that idea and having the council concur or not with that is certainly a good option.
So maybe we could table that if anybody's interested in discussing that later. My second question would be in areas like we had discussed with the orange, brown and yellow. I want some clarification on several, several of the lots there. I think just one for now would be good, but there's there's an address, I just pulled it up on the county assessors map. And we are at thirty three fifty Cia Road. That is a flag lot that comes down to El Camino Real and the flag post, whatever you call that part of the land, comes directly into the VS Marine driveway, if you want to have a frame of reference where it is. Is that a utility easement? And why on this proposed map is only the post of that lot, that three acre lot, medium density, whereas the main part of the property is low density? That could be confusing to residents in the area that live adjacent to the home that's on the flag part of the flag lot. The correct term for that. So is that just like a color by number error on the map that we just accidentally marked that whole lot? Two colors, even though it's one lot? So clarification on that would be great. And also the clarification on low density to medium density in terms of topography, in terms of what's required by the state. When you say twenty four units, that can sound kind of frightening as well. And it would to me as well, if I lived next door to it. What is, what is the ramifications of like actually developing without having to buy all the neighboring parcels? You know, in a, in a low density or medium density area. Like those are just my two areas for now that my question's to be succinct to be, but I suspect you probably don't have an answer to the flag lot question.
In general, we do like to follow property lines when we create zoning boundaries. It makes it a lot easier to distinguish where those boundaries are. In this scenario, that was pulled back because of the fact you want to create sort of this contiguous buffer as you transition back to the single family zone. So there is a split zone on that particular property. And this is an interesting area to to talk about, plan about. Another distinction I want to make is north of San Benito Road, it's already multifamily and there's already apartments being developed there. So that that is sort of fixed, but the area south of San Benito and north of the mixed use designation that's proposed there, the purple or the pink zone down there, that is the area that is today's own rural residential and, you know, there's probably some, based on the council's consensus, those densities could be scaled back. You could change that a little bit. You could make some different suggestions for this particular area. This was all created in response to the early open house workshops we had and the property owners that weighed in on this area and based on the available services. And it's one of the few areas that we're actually able to change in the city based on its characteristics and its services.
And just one ending question on that. In regards to a road that is not city maintained, that is being rezoned potentially. You know, if the scenario goes to where an area is rezoned, multifamily, whatever density and the road that is in the middle of all that is non city maintained, could you clarify at what point does the developer take over control of that road? Like we saw that when we adopted the RV, there was a portion of that road that developer had to build and maintain, I think. If I'm remembering correctly, what see a road being a dirt road, what would happen there if somebody wanted to build on that lot particularly going down that dog leg or the top part of it or any of the orange? What would happen to the road?
The way our standards are today and the way they will be in the future as well is that that developer would be responsible for doing new curb gutter sidewalk and roadway for that particular area. And ensuring that we have adequate emergency access to those areas, which means paving those areas out. And if there's insufficient right of way, even expanding that right of way and recording you right of way. But in terms of future responsibility of the maintenance of that road, that wouldn't defer to the city or change at that time. It would typically stay with the owner of that adjacent property.
Mayor Pretzam Doris.
Yeah, just a little bit of a follow up on the the yellow, orange and brown, I guess. And the the buffer that's between, especially the single family to where you start getting into higher density now, the orange, I guess you said it's maximum twelve. Is that, is that what that?
Yes, low density multifamily, twelve units per acre.
And there's no chance of a CUP that would, that somebody could request a higher density for whatever reason? Because you know, I do see that occasionally, not necessarily with density, but they get bonuses and all kinds of.
Bonuses through affordable housing. If you put in a moderate affordable housing and you got a density bonus, you can get ten percent right off the bat and you can get additional bonuses very easily based on state law.
So the, so the twelve units could get bumped up to a maximum of of what then in in that low density or that orange, whatever the?
It's hard to say an exact number, but there's also the fact that right now the city has adopted fractional density, which means if you do smaller units, you can do more right off the bat. If you do a density bonus on top of that, you can essentially double that number. But the issue is on these properties, you've got two things. You've got slope, you've got some access difficulties and you've got parking requirements and emergency access requirements and road improvement requirements. And then you have height limitations. So at the end of the day, could you really fit those units in there is the question? And that's really going to be the factor that's going to limit what you can do here.
Okay, because I I'm just concerned with, you know, I mean, there's only so much you can do. You're going to, you're stepping it. So I think I see that that going from single family to low to medium. But having it right next to single family homes, if there was, I'm just concerned that somebody could potentially do that. And and have, you know, it really kind of changes the complexion of the area.
There's a remote possibility it could happen. Even the, but keep in mind, even the Emerald Ridge project that's being built now, it's like the third phase is being built now. That project was approved ten years ago and there's still three more phases to build out. And there's just not the financing or demand to even build what's been approved. So these things take decades to occur.
No, I understand that. Could there be zoning? I might be getting a little bit too much into the into the specifics on this, but where it is on a boundary of another zoning. So in other words, where the low density meets the single family. Is there, can there be specifics where these densities can't happen? Do we, are we, is that something that can be written into the code?
Yes. So you, you have ultimate control as council. Hopefully we listen to the community on that as well. But not only can you write standards for setbacks and height into your zoning, but you can also with this general plan simply scale back. simply scale back these boundaries as they're being proposed now a little bit. You can pull it more to the west and say, hey, we'd rather see low density multifamily along a certain portion south of San Bonito. And only go back, you know, to property depths before you go into single family. So you can do things like that as well. Or you could say, hey, we're going to adopt this, but we're going to put an overlay in here with a specific zoning policy later on. And you can earmark that for later. So I think there's ways to address what we're hearing from the community here, which they're concerned about changes here. They're concerned about view shed here. They're concerned about too much too soon.
Now, a question, this is going to be a tough question. The uh the brown area, the median, I guess that's medium density. Do you have a calculation? If this was to get built out, I know this could take years and may not ever happen. But if that was to get built out, what's the total number of units that could potentially fit in that area, that stretch that we show right there, just in the brown?
I don't have that for you right now. We could probably run some numbers for you here based on some area calculations. I know Kelly's really good with that. Putting her on the spot now. But there's other factors such as a fractional density, density bonuses, which could almost double those numbers. But if we went from a standpoint of twenty-four units an acre, and we could probably use some quick measurements to tell you, you know, some rough numbers. But then again, the property development standards, the new accessways, the parking, the slope, they're all going to reduce those as well. Yeah, so it's kind of a a little bit of a guessing game as to how these would actually move forward.
All right, thank you.
Um, I was going to hold some of my questions, but I I have some questions regarding this specific area, so I think we'll just go with that. The, when we looked at the various proposals for, we'll call it the Walmart property, in their staff has had envisioned potentially a road that would go basically from the the red, call it Walmart property to San Bonito pretty much right at the at the juncture of those brown and orange properties. Is that still something that staff would envision? Because that would be, and if so, would that be the access point, if you would, to what shows on here is orange properties?
Yes. And so that road um is shown still mapped on that former Walmart site. And there's a portion of it that actually got built already as part of the Emerald Ridge project. And essentially that would create a loop as a second way out at the back of these properties. And in a perfect world, you would also have another road that would go north, south uh to, you know, south of San Bonito to sort of divide these zoning districts. The more circulation routes you have like that, the more you reduce traffic at certain intersections. So that would be ideal.
Right now, these orange properties are either accessed off of very long flagged lots or off a Cia.
And we don't want that. We, yeah, we would rather have an intersecting road as a local street that would connect San Bonito or connect some of those dead end cul-de-sacs so that you don't have traffic going back uh into the to the east.
Okay. And to address Councilmember Peace's question, I mean, it's unusual to split a piece of property into two zones, but the fact of the matter is the pole, if you will, of a flag lot is for access. You don't build on the pole because they're normally not wide enough to build anything on, correct?
It doesn't appear to be wide enough, but typically you would not. Typically that would be access and 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 typically you need that, you know, it all depends on the width of that. And I think that we haven't gotten down to that scale on all these properties to look at that detail.
The key question here to me in terms of kind of following up on what previous two asked is you know, we we have brown, which is, we call it medium density, but it's really pretty high density. We're talking Emerald Ridge type developments. And orange, you know, we're calling it low density, but multifamily potentially twelve units per acre. Many of the, I drove it today, many of the orange properties, especially if you come down Cia and then you can actually, you can actually get out, you know, the the partially dirt and then you get out on a paved paved driveway to El Camino. But there's a lot of single family homes in there that are you know, centered on a fairly large lot. And so under this zoning though, they could, if they have a vacant lot next door, they could end up with what Mayor Potemderis said of some fairly high numbers of units right next door to them in a location where maybe they've been for a long time in a in basically a fairly rural setting. Now, granted, they're looking downhill at what could become fairly high density apartments. But they're not currently having to worry about somebody coming in next door with twelve units or something, but that would this would create that, right?
If we look back at the place types, the idea for that low density multifamily is really geared towards trying to encourage the cottage cluster, which is sort of these individual homes and a planned developments type type style rather than an apartment building. But sure, it could change, even under today's laws, though. Four and five units can be built on each one of these properties if they stay single family. So we have to keep that in mind as well with ADUs and junior ADUs and SB nine and urban law splits. And so the more we have zoning that allows for a low density multifamily, it basically gets us out of a lot of the state laws that already allow all these multiple units with reduced setbacks and different design configurations.
But you, I think you alluded to this option in one of your answers to uh Mayor Potemderis is that you could instead of low low density multifamily, you you could have it be the low, the highest density of single family, which would essentially be four units per acre or quarter acre. Although that would subject you then to some of the state rules that, you know, would enable somebody to automatically build an ADU, et cetera. So it could be you know, higher density than now in effect, but it would be kind of discrete units in a single family mold, if you will.
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify and make sure I understood, because otherwise there are a couple, there are a few as you go there, undeveloped lots, one of which is fairly significant in size that could potentially have a lot of units on it. So, okay, all right, thank you. I'll pass it on to Councilmember Funk, but I do have some additional questions later.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I'll have some additional, you know, comments as we go on. I'm going to focus my questions in a couple of of larger areas. I want to um follow up first on this, I think, line of questioning that we've been discussing and for this particular area between San Bonito and San and Sommo roads on the east side. If we were to downgrade that, this proposed usage so that to to a lower density approach, as we've been discussing, does that create any problems their housing element for accommodating the types of growth that are needed to accommodate so that young people growing up in this community can potentially have places they might be able to afford to live and have built for futures here?
That's a possibility. Like I mentioned earlier, there's very few areas in our city where we can actually accommodate multifamily because of our infrastructure and because of our roads and our race water. So that is a possibility. It's hard to say right now. It's hard to say, um, it'll be two years from now before we actually get our new arena, our new regional housing needs allocation from Slocog. And we won't know till then what our numbers are going to be from the state in terms of the number of units we'll need to develop in our community for the next eight years. And keep in mind too, this is a twenty-year plan. This is supposed to go out to twenty forty-five. So yes, we do need additional capacity. We will need additional folks working in our community. We will need additional housing. And because something's multifamily doesn't mean it's a location where affordable housing is going to go. Uh, for example, the Emerald Bridge apartments are not anywhere near affordable. They're very expensive. Their monthly rent is probably much higher than my mortgage is on my west side of Tascadaro House. So these are all things to keep in mind. Um, but at the end of the day, also, we need to respect what the community wants in this area. While helping to educate about what we need in this area as well.
Okay, so I'm not quite sure where that landed in terms of the creating problems with our housing element. Would I be correct in understanding that it it doesn't, it it wouldn't create problems now with our housing element if we uh pursued an approach of of um say, low density multifamily as opposed to uh or medium density multifamily as opposed to.
In the short term, it's not going to create a problem. In the long term, it could. For example, right now, we are basically out of vacant multifamily land in the city of Tascadaro. And so one of the efforts of doing this new general plan land use map is looking for more land that's underdeveloped or vacant. And this was one of the few spots that could occur.
And is there also um multifamily um land be becoming available uh through through becoming allowed or entitled, it, you know, available as the zoning goes. Um, along Moral Road on the north side by the high school. Could you pull up Moral Road? Yeah, okay, so I see brown there on the north side. Can you tell us about what is changing in the zonings in the brown and the orange there as well?
It is going up in density. Some of that area is already multifamily as you head towards um or behind Moral Road. The difficulty there is you've got a lot of very small lots and they're all built out. They're all covered in homes. There's no vacant sites in there. Um, so really kind of encouraging redevelopment of the area is going to be extremely slow. Um, it's not going to result in much change very rapidly. A lot of these areas won't, even the area that we were just looking at on El Camino really won't. It doesn't have that, but this area is even more dense now and even smaller lots and even more developed out. So yes, that's being done here to encourage some lot consolidation. And eventually, you know, if someone comes in and says, hey, I'd like to buy your home and and buy three or four homes together, perhaps they could piece together a project, but those things happen very slow.
Okay, um thank you. And if if we uh found in the next housing element cycle that the, if we took more conservative approaches now in the next housing cycle, we have to to allow some other additional spaces for multifamily um or at some level of density. Would, what's the mechanism we could use to deal with that? We just, we didn't have to amend the general plan or would we just do some kind of overlay or something? What do we do there?
We would likely be in a spot where we would have to amend our general plan if we can't find that space for housing.
Okay, we'll keep all that loveliness in mind. Um, I want to move on to trafficway uh for a moment. When I was looking at the the plan and the very thing uh and the various elements, and when I correct in understanding, first of all, that that is a designated truck route through its entire run from El Camino through downtown around um uh past San Bonito Elementary um on to where it connects to Santa Cruz and then back to El Camino over by Home Depot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then um it's also when um in the mobility section of the plan I'm understanding that we have some requirement expectations there um that it that this is also an area um expected to come uh to accommodate multimodal transport um throughout that period, throughout that whole range. And to have buffers that help manage the impact of having our most, our heaviest industrial heaviest being relative um area industrial uses while across the street from residential. On that, all of that is happening on that same set of properties. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Can you talk about how that actually fits together with these very narrow properties? Would does, can you actually accommodate on the width of the street enough of all of the extra uh lanes and buffers and space, the um parking opportunities? Or are these businesses with with relatively skinny spaces that we're counting on to generate jobs? Going to also have to accommodate all of their parking on site, limited driveway access. Much of their space being eaten up by uh street access and requirements. But talk to me about how that works.
Yes. Well, fortunately, there's a very long section of class one pathway already developed along trafficway that leads almost all the way to San Boni- San Bonito Elementary? Yes. And there's a lot of sidewalk along trafficway all the way out um to via road. There is a small section uh beyond Via where the properties are very narrow that back up to the railroad tracks there. Most of them are developed, so they're not going to be uh required to put in new improvements like that unless they redevelop and build new buildings. There's only one or two little sites which have been the focus of a conditional use permit request recently that are vacant and that would trigger the kind of improvements that you're talking about, which would mean doing curb gutter sidewalk or some kind of a pathway. And that um is in our current planning now for roads. And it would, it it's in the right of way, so it wouldn't really take away from their property. But things like landscape requirements or fencing could infringe upon their developable rights. And I could have our public works director weigh in more on that, but I think I see what you're saying, but there's only a few properties that would be impacted. Not a, not a tremendous distance.
Yeah, the the question really is um how do you connect the area that essentially runs from Colony Park Community Center to uh the end of the of that class what, two pathway at O- uh Oreas Avenue. So basically for and most of this is from the Hay and Feed to Brian's Bread, if you, if you want to uh scope it. And there we've got, you know, that that set of, you know, these rolled door commercial properties. You know, and a couple of vacant areas, but most of it's that are mu- what's developed is really close to the street. There's not much land there between them and the thing. Is it possible to pursue pursue a more flexible to still have some kind of connection uh for um, you know, kids who want to get from the the school, the community center um, you know, safely. Um, but also to have more flexibility in how that street is done so that um you retain commercially viable properties if we are counting on those properties to actually generate jobs for the community.
So the right of way there is already pretty wide and can accommodate the improvements that we need. So we wouldn't be cutting out of the property by requiring and to do the curb gutter sidewalk and pathways that we need if they develop. I think what would change, as I mentioned earlier, their developable area is our landscape requirements. We normally want trees in front of these properties. We want a landscape strip. And that can be between five to ten feet wide. That's probably the arguable point. That's probably the discretionary section in that industrial zone that could be talked about, that's typically outside of the established right of way boundary. But the right of way itself there is already sufficient um if we put those improvements in it. Now, if you're looking for ways to reduce the width of the right of way and do alternative standards, that's a whole nother discussion.
It feels like, I mean, this is a level of detail that would be discussed under, you know, under zoning, I guess. I mean, in other words, if we say this area should be you know, what it is or what you're proposing. You know, it's a very good question, but it seems like we could do that, address that at another point that doesn't need to be addressed specifically in the general plan, or am I misreading that?
There are a couple of aspects of this that hit on other properties, that that hit on other areas. They, the the general life, part of it is is just making sure when we get this whole plan together that eat the individual pieces add up to something that as a whole actually works. Um, and and I still am having trouble finding, figuring out how it is that we would actually have the connectivity want, we want in that along trafficway, it particularly if it retains remains a truck route. So that is sort of my, sort of my next question is, is it necessary for trafficway to be formally designated as a truck route? And what are the implications if it's, if it is not?
And I think that's a good comment for us to explore after tonight. The question, is this required to be a truck route? We don't have that answer for you tonight, but we'll take that down and bring that back.
Yeah, and I think it would be helpful to look at the truck routes in general also. Do we need to have, now that the Via Bridge is, is completed and can handle trucks, do we need to have a connection to the 41 there? That would predominantly be used by those, those last remaining industrial level properties that haven't been, the backside of Hay and Feed and back in there along the, the river, which have not shown any great urgency to be developed, but.
Property owner constrained is what we call them. And those are very prime industrial sites that are vast and vacant.
Yeah, okay. And then in, in dealing with, with areas like this where the physical environment creates constraints to either, either because, you know, you need too much of somebody's property to make it work, you know, you don't, there's nothing, or, or there's resistance from the homeowners or, or landowners there along an area. Can we pursue the kinds, you know, under this plan, pursue the kinds of alternatives where maybe you try to get the pathway on one side of the street, but not necessarily have bike lanes on both sides of the street or, or sidewalks on both sides of the street, multi-use paths? But just do something where, I mean, to be able to, for instance, connect Portola to the high school along Santa Lucia, even if you just get one side of the street that's got something, would be a huge impact for safe routes to school. Can we do that under this plan?
Yes, and I think our public works director had his light on for a moment. He's just itching to speak.
Councilmember Funk, regarding traffic way, we're actually working on a design right now and plan line for traffic way. As you might recall, when we did the sewer project a few years ago, half the road was paved. And we actually have in the CIP to do the other half of the road coming up. So we're, we're actually have a draft of what that plan line for traffic way ultimately will be. And, and then in addition to that, having a bike path or multipurpose path on one side of the road to accommodate both pedestrians and bicyclists. These are some of the things we're looking at as well with flexible road designs, because we have a lot of constraints in our city. For instance, example, Santa Lucia Road, say from Ardea to Portola, be great to have that. You know, it's a very windy, hilly, but there are some constraints, you know, on one side that has a creek that's, you know, 10 feet below and on the other side has an embankment that's 20 to 30 feet higher. So how do you accommodate that? Even though we have the right of way, there are some topography challenges that we have that always trigger retaining walls and other things that make the projects much more expensive. But, you know, we can look at all those options as flexible road designs with this.
Okay, so that, that's helpful to know that we have the flexibility under this plan to accommodate some creativity to work with, you know, the assets that the good Lord has given us and various other challenges. Okay, moving on to the flex innovation space, that, there's been a lot of, I'm hearing from people about why can't we have housing in that, in that application? Because for a lot of the developer, for developers who work in residential housing, that's where they make their money rather than commercial. And if it doesn't have residential, they can't get the commercial to sell. I don't know about the, the developers who are working mostly commercial, whether they find that they can't sell the commercial if the residential is there. So talk to me about that and also about whether childcare would be an allowable usage in this kind of zone or would that be problematic?
Childcare is not problematic anywhere and it would be allowed in this kind of a zone. We can create our own list of allowed uses if we'd like. And what can be problematic is when you start putting residential in areas where you want light industrial, some of those folks won't locate there or they won't build buildings that are, that are big enough to accommodate the kind of high-end users you want. So we've heard a lot of that. So rather than water down that district, you create more mixed-use districts or other areas that can have residential. Once you, once you have a residential use as an allowed use in a district, it typically becomes the dominant land use of that district and it governs what else can go there. But commercial uses don't govern what else can go on there as strongly as a residential use. So you can kind of fit those in after the fact. But the reality is today, we have a lot of zones that don't allow mixed use and they've worked out quite successfully, our commercial park zone. And essentially, this flex zone is the new commercial park zone. It's an area where we want a commercial park, an area where we want buildings with high roofs, areas where there might be land uses that are a little different than what you might want to mix in with a mixed-use district. Not to say that couldn't work, but again, we're desperate to preserve areas in our community for those kinds of land uses, for those light industrial land uses, because we have very little land. We can't expand our city. We're tight boundaries by the Salinas River and the hills to the west side. And at the same time, there's very little flat land in our city. And so this is it. And so when you look forward 10, 20, 30 years, where do you develop these areas? They may not all be filled in right now and that's okay. You need to have inventory. So this is looking to that future for that. Couple of things to keep in perspective on that.
Okay. And councilmember Peak mentioned the non-maintained streets. Is there anything currently in this plan that addresses the historical non-maintained streets in, in a way of, that gives us any pathway towards thinking about how we might facilitate those getting fixed up to standard? I'm particularly interested in the non-maintained streets that were here before the city incorporated and that are within the urban services line. And particularly interested in through streets so that they're used by people who don't necessarily live on that street or aren't delivering things or helping out people who are living on that street. Is there anything in this currently?
Non-maintained streets are a hot topic in the community. There's nothing in this general plan that addresses that. And if there's council consensus, you could add a soft policy that goes that direction, but it might be an activity better handled outside of the general plan as more of a very specific fiscal or infrastructure planning document where we could look at that separately. Because it, I think it unravels a lot of historical pattern of where we've gone as a community and it could have significant fiscal ramifications. Once you go down that road, no pun intended, it starts to unravel because we have a lot of folks that have unmaintained roads that really want attention on them. So I think it's a, it's a big topic.
Yeah, it is. It's also, you know, we're planning 20 years in the future and we have parts of our town that look like Tijuana because the streets are just that bad. And to plan 20 years ahead and, and not acknowledge that we have this legacy problem, not acknowledge that we have areas of the town where it's just really freaking difficult to get the whole neighborhood together to pay the kind of money that it takes to fix the road up. And that, to get that, make those things happen without some kind of mechanism or involvement, let, you know, let alone financial support, but at least legal mechanisms and facilitation. That's, we, we at least need to start by acknowledging when we're looking 20 years ahead that that problem exists. Okay, we'll come back to that in discussion. The, a couple of more technical items and trying to understand where things were. One of the things we've talked about is with the Salinas River. This is both an important environmental resource, a potential attraction for tourism and a way to, in, in recreation and, and other activities. It's important to think about it as a continuous space. So I was looking for it in all of the, in the land use planning and all of that and ultimately discovered those features in the streets, mobility, the section, where we're looking at that. But there are a couple of maps that shows in, in the document that showed, because these are trails that can, that run up and down the Salinas. So you think about mobility for people on horseback, on people on foot, people on bicycles, that those would be trails connecting. There, there's a couple of maps in here, some of which show, you have policies that talk about connecting all of the DNs of trail through town so that people can use it and access it from other places, but also continue continuity. And yet on the, the map, it doesn't show that continuity is planned. Can you talk about that, the state of the maps in the plan?
They're intended to be contiguous. So I think there's some updates that need to occur on these draft maps yet. So I think that's a good comment for us to incorporate and we want to make sure that there's a contiguous connection. There's no reason there's not.
Okay, great, thank you. Is it, let's see. Should we, as we're looking to get head of household jobs, we, could we consider including a policy in economic development that we're promoting the kinds of infrastructure that facilitates working from home? Because that way we don't have to build the factories. People just adopt the second bedroom.
Yes, and I think we have some policies that already go that way in our economic development chapter. And so I can probably refer to some of those tonight, but if we think we need some, something more about connectivity in terms of internet availability or other, other aspects that will endeavor that, it's certainly at the pleasure of the council.
Okay. The, there's language in the economic development plan as we're looking, you know, sorry, these, these feel disconnected because I'm sort of, these are my notes walking through the plan, section by section. And these are particulars that we need to ask about or address. And my, council members can note, I have pages and pages. We're not going through all of that. We're just hitting a few. I, I'm mindful of not trying everyone's patience and staff has been great about this. But do we need, in, in the economic development language, there's, the overview talks about the state of hotels, you know, using 2022 data, saying, hey, hotels are doing great. We're doing great. We should promote more hotels and this is all wonderful. Since then, we've all noticed driving around hotel after hotel after hotel under construction up in, in North County, not, you know, a big one here, but also in Paso. We have hotels that are on the books already in Beryl Creek in terms of what's been authorized and additional capacity in Del Rio Ranch. That would be not hotel, but overnight stays. Do we need to, or could we, have we considered the current, the occupancy challenges? And should we consider promoting occupant, occupancy at current assets as well as, you know, expanding long-term hotels? It won't do us any good to expand the hotels if we can't fit people in them.
Certainly can add a policy that goes that direction. And again, I think that would be good in the economic development section. And so can be a policy that enhances some of the things we're already doing for promotions and for tourism and for encouraging these hotels to, or finding ways to increase their occupancy, certainly. And there is, the, the thing is, yeah, things have changed a lot in just the last year. And those things that have changed in the last year aren't reflected in, in the draft policies we have here. Maybe we need to update that to go that direction because there has been a tremendous amount of inventory that's come online. But at the same time, the tourism industry and the wine industry and some of those things have taken a little bit of a dip. And we don't know if it's just temporary or that's a long-term change.
But there's nothing in this, in this proposal, in this draft general plan that increases the areas zone for hotels or, or anything like that. So it's really not, I mean, it's going to be a market-driven thing. If there's too many hotels, unfortunately, some will not do well. But I mean, we're not really doing anything in here that's.
Not for locational, no.
Specifically encouraging more hotels as cities. We generally like them because they generate a lot of revenue. But we're not doing anything in this particular plan, like, you know, opening up whole new swaths of areas that, for hotels or anything, so.
We're not. We already have four hotels that essentially have been approved on certain sites that have not even been built in the city of Otaskadero. So there's plenty of land inventory and approved projects even.
Right, but there's nothing new in here relative to hotels, other than we generally like them. If they're successful.
That'll mainly come into play in the fiscal analysis, which is coming up, which we don't have yet. But as we're looking at, I mean, and this is, I mean, indulge this comment for just a moment. It's frustrating to be trying to give good feedback on these land use decisions and how, and the, the infrastructure demands and so forth without understanding what the financial implications are going to be. It's a little like shopping with no price tags. And that always makes me uncomfortable because it's very easy for us to want to do all of these really cool things and have all these requirements. And then we discover that, yeah, but to get there, it's going to cost, developers are going to have to put so much money into making those things happen that the projects don't pencil out and they don't come, or we can't charge impact fees that are nearly enough to cover the cost of all of those things we dreamed about. And so then we have to either subsidize them or they don't happen. So it, this, it's just, it's difficult to not have that financial information. Okay, I will hold the rest of my thoughts until the comments section. Thank you.
Right, thank you. Yes, and I think, you know, we can ask more questions that might be prompted by public comments. I think we're all eager to hear that. Councilmember Newsom?
Thank you. I just have a few questions. When I was looking over the place types, we had some designation underneath the innovation flex that talks about the FAR. I know FAR is not disclosed in the glossary as of a definition, but you broke it down in the report talking about floor area ratio. Can you explain a little bit more how that works? Like in an innovation flex, it's got a point six FAR versus one in some areas.
Yes, yes. And in fact, I noticed that when I was reading through this first draft that we don't have a definition for floor area ratio. We're going to add that definition because that is, we hate to have acronyms in there that don't have definitions. But the point six basically is that, take your land area, let's say you have 10,000 square foot lot. That means your coverage of a building could only be 6,000 square feet in that lot. So that would be a point six floor area ratio.
Okay, so it'll be detailed in the glossary. Awesome.
Yes.
Do we have a document that kind of goes over the different designation changes? I know when you try to compare a prior year general plan to this, or not prior year, a prior period general plan, we are using names that didn't exist before. So when we want to do a comparison, do we say what was formerly known as is now this designation?
We could do that. We could have a little definition crossover, but they're not all going to fit perfectly. Innovation flex is going to kind of include commercial service and commercial park, whereas, you know, the multifamily designations are simply different numbers. The rural's almost identical.
Because we used to use residential multifamily. So where does that fit?
So single-family residential, I'm sorry, low-density multifamily, medium-density multifamily and high-density multifamily are the new design.
Okay, so RMF 10 would be where?
Would be the low-density multifamily.
Okay.
So now there's three designations instead of two. Previously, we had two, now there's a third. So they don't all. So they don't all fit perfectly, but I think there's a way we can, we can.
Just so if somebody picked up something that they looked up was really old, they'd try to figure out where that, you know, cube fits into the diagram. We spoke a lot about the Del Rio corridor, obviously because there's a lot of development that's coming forward. On the general plan, do we see us adding some of those existing changes? Like Beryl Creek, there's some access points that we talk about having roads in there, Del Rio area. We talk about having a road, but we don't have it listed in the general plan. Mayor Barbeau talked about it, but as we're, um, doing the commercial corridor in the red, I'm not seeing that connector road that's already somewhat tied out to across the street where Valley Fresh is.
So those roads that are shown in projects aren't roads yet. They wouldn't be roads until they get recorded into a map and the project actually happens. But the Beryl Creek project, for example, is reflected in the general plan in terms of the land use. Right under the designation, it says 101 right there. You can see the Beryl Creek project with its, the sort of innovation flex zone, and it's got some multi-family in it as well.
So the existing projects that are coming forward fit in the existing designation that we have going forward through 2045?
Yes.
Okay, so everything is going to conform to the new changes?
Absolutely.
And then at some point, I vaguely remember us having a conversation about a road realignment on San Ramon, Del Rio area. Do we see us former conversations where roundabouts, those have been tabled, we're no longer at that traffic usage? Does this general plan reflect if we have to, um, change that access point?
I'd have to double check in our mobility element to see if we have policies to talk about it. But that's a project that's already on the table. That's a project that's already had, um, some conceptual design done. We're simply waiting to fund that project. We don't have the funding, uh, to do that at this particular time, but it's still a planned proposal.
So if we have a planned proposal, then we should be implementing those changes in the maps for the general plan? Is that correct?
Not necessarily. And I can check back to our mobility element to see if it's mentioned in a policy.
Okay, just wanted to clarify that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, yeah, I don't, I mean, as I understand it though, we don't get necessarily into that level of specificity in the general plan. We have a policy to, to, you know, to have good means of mobility. We don't specify like, you know, where the city owns, uh, and, and would be able to realign Ramona as we've discussed. It wouldn't necessarily have to be in the general plan per se as part of the mobility element, correct?
Correct.
Okay, okay, got it. All right. Well, I do have other questions. Uh, I think I'm going to hold off on them though, because I'm eager to hear the public input. It might prompt more questions. So with that, I'd like to open it up to public comment. And anybody wishing to speak, please approach. And again, if you do want to speak, please, uh, line up so we don't have to wait for folks to cross the room. So, and as mentioned, please state your name and you have three minutes. Welcome first speaker.
Hello, council members. My name is Maggie Payne. I am the coordinator of the Uplift Childcare Coalition, and I am also here representing First Five Slow County. The Authentic Atascadero Vision Statement includes aspirational language for current and future generations that builds on the city's assets and points it toward a future as a city that offers opportunities for all residents to thrive. In the face of decreasing housing affordability on the central coast, Atascadero continues to be recognized and sought out as a community where it is still possible to raise multi-generational families. Including intentional language regarding childcare and early childhood in the vision statement, guiding principles, and throughout the general plan, will build on this momentum to set the city apart as a unique and livable place to raise children. Affordable, accessible, quality childcare, which I've been talking to you all about for years, is increasingly being recognized by public and private sector leaders as a key economic mobility strategy in our central coast communities. The vital resource is part of a critical sector benefiting not only working families in the city of Atascadero, but the greater city economy as a whole. It's not just a, I don't have kids kind of problem. Language included in the general plan must address childcare as an essential component of infrastructure. The Uplift Childcare Coalition and First Five Slow County are ready and willing to offer support and guidance regarding childcare and its inclusion in the general plan. We offer to partner with the city of Atascadero leadership, including the Planning Commission, City Council and staff towards this goal. Earlier today, we sent a letter to the council along with a document that includes language recommendations for authentic Atascadero. These updates and additions will ensure childcare is integrated in the city's economic development strategy for the next two decades and that children and families are included and considered throughout the general plan. The city of Atascadero's youngest residents are the future. And it's our job now to establish a foundation for them and their families to flourish. The 245 general plan offers a unique opportunity to set the stage for a resilient and thriving economy with the inclusion of childcare as a recognized economic mobility strategy and early childhood as a priority. We thank you for your time and attention and look forward to working together in this common cause. Thank you so much.
So thank you for your comments, and we did all receive your, um, thing in hard copy and have read it. So thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, council. Uh, my name is Jeff Snyder. I live with my wife and four young kids on Pino Solo Avenue. Our small home sits on one acre and we share about 200 feet of fence line with the vacant property that was supposed to become the principal mixed-use project. I'm talking about that empty field next to the car wash across from Miners. Uh, when we moved into our home in 2019, the project was already approved. Fifty-two residential units, including six live work and a car wash. The site is currently zoned RMF 10, 10 units, 10 units per acre, a density that provided a reasonable transition from El Camino into my neighborhood of small houses on huge lots. Uh, the developer who bought that permitted plan, however, let those permits expire and appears to be waiting to see how this general plan update will increase what he can build. The proposed general plan update rezones these parcels and others along El Camino to a new denser-than-ever designation, high-density multi-family, 25 to 36 apartments and condos per acre. Uh, and if the example images in the draft are, are a guide that's up to four stories tall. Uh, much of the proposed rezone will have very little short-term impact. Most of this area is already developed and there's just not financial incentive to redevelop and densify now, uh, as, as has been discussed. But this plan will have a, an immediate impact on how the empty parcels next to the car wash are developed over the next couple of years. And this rezone changes the designation from 10 units per acre to 25 to 36 units. Some quick math says the upper bound on the 40, the 4.9 acres would allow 176 units if they can fit. I fully understand that this general plan update process is an update to zoning across all of Atascadero. And this isn't plan review right now, but this general plan update is our way to look to the future and what we want our community to look like. It's a statement of values and expectations for neighborhoods, and it's how we telegraph those values and expectations to developers and property owners. Allowing a rezone of these parcels to high-density multi-family would immediately encourage the densest growth in Atascadero along half-acre plus single-family homes. My neighbors and I find this unacceptable. I encourage you next time you're at Miners to grab some popcorn, look across the, at the empty field, uh, across El Camino and imagine what 176 units up to four stories tall might look like. Imagine 100 units at three stories. Also, yikes. Take a walk down my street, Pino Solo, and imagine that level of height and density between my chicken coop and the car wash. I, I can't wait to see this space developed. I was looking forward to it. Uh, that, uh, empty field is such a blight, but we must rezone this space with appropriate guardrails to development. Zoning unprecedented density here will immediately invite a project that simply does not belong. Our general plan update is a statement of our values and expectations, and it's our opening offer to developers. Please scale this back to ensure the future, very soon project here brings growth that's authentic to this neighborhood and to Atascadero. Thanks for listening.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jean Collins, and if you could pull up a map that shows the San Benito, um, Del Rio area. As I wanted to specifically address the area that several of you spoke about today. And, and, uh, Mayor Barbeau actually drove down our road. So I am a retired, retired elementary music teacher. I taught lots of people's kids in this room, I think. As I, I live on Sia Road, which is in that orange brown area that the zoning is increasing. And I would appreciate it if I, if, as an elementary teacher, if I had a crayon, I would cover, color maybe eight to nine of those little boxes yellow instead of orange and brown. So I would appreciate it if you would consider before you vote this new zoning or increase the zoning so that it's in the plan for, for 20 years, maybe consider some of the lots, as Mayor Barbeau pointed out, that are single homes on one-acre properties that have been there. I've lived in my house for 42 years. I am in yellow, but my neighbors two doors down or three doors down are now increasing to the orange. And further down, as you go around that dog leg, it's increasing to the brown. And already from the open house last week to what I see right there, it looks like there's been a change. That flag lot that's, that Councilman Peak marked, part of it's now orange on there. At the open house, it was the darker brown. So I appreciate that you're all considering it, you received our letters, that you drove on a road, that you just consider. And if there are other lots that people, some of my neighbors are here and they'll speak more specifically. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker.
Good evening, mayor and city council members. Thank you for hearing me this evening. My name is Deborah Hintergart, and I am here along with many of my neighbors from a quiet, little-known, non-city-owned road, much of which is dirt, uh, by the name of SIA, S-I-L-L-A Road in lovely, unique city of Atascadero, California. A city abundant with trees and rolling hillsides. A city that allows animal keeping rights to homeowners on over an acre. A city whose council and administration values its rural beauty. So in keeping with your values, I and my neighbors respectfully request that you maintain the rural character of our road, SIA Road, by not changing the zoning along any of SIA Road from our current residential, single-family one zoning. And I especially request that the three-acre parcel at 3350 SIA Road, which unfortunately has a narrow strip touching El Camino Real, but no access nor road from El Camino Real, we ask that it not be zoned for 24 units per acre, or I know it's multi, I'm not sure how many, as proposed in the 2045 plan. But please allow it to remain RSF 1, one home per acre, the same as my adjoining lot and my neighbor's lots on SIA Road. You can see how apartment buildings next to one-acre properties keeping horses, goats, chickens would definitely disrupt the beauty and rural aspect of our neighborhood. We are at your mercy, and we are trusting that you will seriously and sincerely consider our request. Leave the zoning of properties along SIA Road RSF 1, and especially leave that three-acre parcel, 3350 SIA Road as RSF 1. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, please.
Uh, good evening, council and mayor. Um, thank you so much for this opportunity to address you. I, my name is Sally Salino, and I also live on SIA Road. Um, we have been in our home for 40 years. We love our street, we love our neighborhood, we love our neighbors. It's a very stable neighborhood. I don't think anyone new has moved in in probably decades. My request is similar, the same as my neighbors', and I would also like to say I represent two other neighbors who weren't able to be here tonight that are also in agreement. We would like you to keep what is RFS or whatever, the single-family residence, keep that the same and make all of Silla, SIA on both sides the same as single-family residence zone. And, um, thank you for your attention, and that's why I did this.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak? Last call. Okay, we will bring it back to council for discussion. I want to, uh, make clear that we are essentially this evening providing guidance on, based on consensus. We don't have to have a specific motion unless we are, unless we need that for our own clarity in terms of what guidance we're providing. But generally, we're looking for consensus on some critical issues that we provide guidance to staff on any changes we'd like to see, uh, in, in the draft general plan. I'm going to start because I have some questions for you. And that is, um, you're going, gentleman mentioned the principal property and the principal project, which is something I've been on council long enough to remember, that that was originally commercially-zoned property, correct?
Yes.
And so we had some discussions at the time, and to go back to comments you've made, we, uh, you know, in terms of why we don't like to quote, "give up" commercial property. Because if we allow, you know, residential on, on a given property, you know, housing is what will be built and what will be, you know, what would take over. Because developers generally know they can sell a house or rent a house or rent apartments. We, we're, we need a balance of commercial development in order to provide our residents with things to buy and, and tax revenue to fund the city. But what I'm getting at here is we, that was previously commercial. So it went and progressively over multiple iterations of the project became more and more residential and less and less mixed use. And now we're talking about, if you could go that, to that map, it sounds like we're essentially giving up on the commercial idea and it's becoming, um, multi-family.
It was originally approved as this mixed-use project. The reality is the mixed use was horizontal, not vertical. So what got approved by the city, um, over a decade ago was a residential project with a, just a cornerstone, little commercial property, which later on became the car wash. Right next to it, there was also some work-live. It never got developed. So what's on the map now is proposed to be high-density multi-family because it's close in, it's near a freeway interchange, it's surrounded by commercial. And it's in an area that's very intense.
For me, I mean, the work-live was almost a fig leaf to try to keep some aspect of commercial because it was like, oh, we're going to, you know, there'll be downstairs, this will be an architect's office or, you know, somebody like that. And, uh, but it was really going to turn into another bedroom. The point being though, I mean, I'm a big believer in property rights. And as I've said on the council, I've always tended to look like, okay, what's the zoning? What does the zoning allow? And I tend to want to allow that because I think that's the reasonable expectation of a person who brought, bought property. But in this case, this is where like institutional memory comes in. Cause if I, if we made this multi-family and I joined the council 10 years from now, I would stare at the neighbor and go, well, hey, it says it's multi-family. What are you complaining about? You know, that's what it's own, that's what, you know, the, the, the own, the new owner has a right to expect. But in this case, we've taken something that was commercial and now we've turned it into, we're talking about turning it into multi-family right next door to fairly large lots. My question is, when you have these situations where we're going to have multi-family bumping up against single-family, you know, talk about mixed use, can you have essentially where, you know, whatever's abutting up against the, uh, single-family lots, that on that portion of the property, if you will, you kind of have a horizontal higher density in the front towards El Camino, lower density in the back near the neighbors? Is that a, um, without changing the zoning itself, is that something we could do or lay out as a requirement? Where there's not enough room for a transition zone?
I'm going to chime in a little bit. Oh, I'm Kelly Gleason, Planning Manager. Nice to see you all. So today, the property is actually zoned multi-family. It was commercial way back in the day, and then when the project was approved, we actually did a rezone at that time to change the designation from commercial to multi-family. So it is multi-family today, but it is a lower-density multi-family. The current general plan proposal in this area, again, Pino Solo is an area that has sewer availability and easier access to El Camino Real and some of our interchanges. So you can see that the west side of Pino Solo is proposed to be designated as low-density multi-family. So that would be a higher-density zone as well. And then the other side of Pino Solo staying single-family, but with that four-unit-per-acre designation, uh, possibility for those particular parcels. So in terms of transition, the proposal does include a transition. Um, it is definitely a different transition than what is there today. So there could be discussion on the appropriateness of the proposed designations.
Okay, thank you for that answer. I thought that property had been rezoned mixed and not, not given up completely.
No, we did the little square that is along principal, right there. That one is currently zoned commercial. It was where the live-work units were. Again, kind of a token live-work component and didn't really seem realistic to hold on to in terms of a potential development proposal in the future.
Okay, all right, thank you. And speaking of sewer, if you could go over, I don't know if we have it on the map, but it's kind of on the left side of this map, Portola, where it's inside the pinkish urban services line, which usually is described as we're going to do urban services in there, which is most frequently, at least what comes to mind first is sewer services available or is intended to ultimately be available inside the urban services line. We've had requests from people on that stretch of road, I think, right in where the word Portola is, you know, that they would, you know, they wanted to rezone. But of course, currently, there's no sewer available. There's no, I don't believe any specific plan to bring sewer there in the, in, anywhere in the near future. But we have somewhere in this, we have a statement about the availability of sewer affecting density. Or at least, I think we have a statement in there to that effect, because that's really a key item. Whereas if sewer became available in a given area, then it might be appropriate to change the zoning in that area to allow more density. But as long as sewer is not available, it, you know, it shouldn't be, you know, higher, higher density. Because one thing, the Water Quality Control Board wouldn't let us allow too many, you know, new septic tanks.
That's correct. Generally, the lot size minimum to have an onsite wastewater treatment or septic system is one acre. A lot of those lots along Portola are much less than one acre. So they're non-conforming. They don't conform to today's standards. So, and they don't have sewer at this particular time. And the street is actually uphill from the property. So it's somewhat problematic unless you fix those basic infrastructure needs. But also, we have to look at the bigger picture. Just because they can get access to sewer doesn't mean we have the sewer capacity, the wastewater treatment plant to accommodate it. So as soon as you start adding these properties in, you add a significant magnitude as you go along. And, you know, how far do you go with that? I think what we promised our community early on is that we would generally preserve most of the west side as it is today, but understanding that there's a lot of non-conforming lots that are smaller than what we would allow out there today. And so I think we are getting requests along this section of Portola Road to reduce the minimum lot size and to allow a much smaller lot size. But the infrastructure is not there at the moment to do that. And it also would set a precedent to continue that spread further to the north or to the west along that line.
Okay, thank you. On downtown, on page 318, 3-18, we talk about downtown mixed use. I don't see any reference to, I mean, we say the downtown mixed-use place type is characterized by moderate to high building heights. And we do say that this district has the highest density of any district, which is logical to say in any city that your highest density would be in your downtown. I don't see, and one of my, you know, guiding principles throughout this entire general plan update process has been that we should allow taller buildings downtown. I don't see any mention of that as a premise or as a policy in the downtown area that not only will it have the highest density, which by implication would mean height, but that we would also, the tallest buildings in the city would be allowed downtown.
We don't have a specific policy that calls out height specifically. That's normally more of a zoning ordinance implementation of the character of downtown being, being shown as your most intense area. So that would come forward with a zoning ordinance update. I don't know if we want to say specifically in the general plan that we're absolutely going to go to four stories or in all situations. Some of that comes with some design standards and some nuance that would come with the comprehensive zoning update.
Right, but I mean, if you say you're going to have, allow taller buildings or that, or just simply say the tallest buildings in the city would be in the down, allowed in the downtown area, that's a statement of general principle that seems appropriate to the general plan. And then, yes, you have a zoning ordinance that, you know, kind of carries out the details of that.
Yeah, so if you wanted to modify the character statement to include height, we could do that.
Okay. Let's see, then, if you could go back to the map that contains Silla that we're discussing. Actually, wait, don't, don't leave, because you got the, you got the triangle up here and I wanted to talk about the triangle. I drove the triangle today. Most of the streets, although you can see, it was there. I'm sorry, I told you to change and now I'm going back to you on the triangle. There we go. You see, there's a, you know, a number of streets, so I'm not sure I hit them all. You were talking about changing a lot of these, you know, to low-density multifamily. I noticed in driving that there, it's mostly all single-family homes. But there are, in just, I'll say, almost seemingly random spots, duplexes, triplexes, you know, four-unit things or perhaps 16 units in four different buildings or something. So there are spots of multifamily. I'm not sure how they got there in the middle of what is otherwise a single-family neighborhood. Perhaps there's some history there, or whether that even happened under city or prior to city, because they look right around in that 70s age range. Did it happen under any particular city guidance?
Those happened prior to city incorporation. They appear to, and that's the construction style. A lot of things happened where there were different densities under the county's general plan for those areas. But the proposal here is a low-density multifamily. And the reasoning for that is we're trying to get ahead of what the state's already allowing. The state's already allowing four and even five units per single-family property in here. And we're trying to match that by putting multifamily zoning in that is more definitive of saying, here's what we'll allow, instead of the state just allowing it haphazardly, here's what we'll allow. And then we have objective design standards that guide that. The intent behind low-density multifamily, as I mentioned earlier, is really that cottage development is really a single-family type development and a planned development, where they have very small yards, very small lots, but they're that postage stamp development.
I guess the question we, that's what we desire. That might be what we desire. But as I drive along and see these, you know, kind of boxes from the 1970s, certainly would be a temptation to build a box, you know, with four units in it, so you can rent it out, because obviously have a need for housing. And so they're going to rent. They can be ugly, they can be, you know, small, they could be whatever. They're going to rent because there's a, you know, crucial need for people to be able to rent things. How do we, you know, how do we feel comfortable and certainly have neighbors feel comfortable, you know, that they're going to end up with four cottages next door instead of a box?
So zoning it multifamily allows us to implement our objective design standards. We don't have objective standards for single-family and we can't create them necessarily because SB 9 and ADU law take away certain authority to do any sort of design regulation. So under SB 9 and ADU law, you could build a fourplex on a single-family property today. You could have a duplex or a fourplex on a vacant lot. It could be something like that. But because we have objective design standards, we hope that that box integrates better into the, into the neighborhood and has a little bit better design aesthetic. It's, it's kind of the missing middle, for lack of, it's for our gentle density, where you might have a duplex in a backyard, you might have a little fourplex on a corner. There might be some styles, but we hope with objective design standards through a multifamily zoning that we're able to sort of help continue neighborhood character better.
Okay. Do we also, you know, since the general plan, a separate question now, since the general plan is, to me, a kind of a vision and a, and a guide, we don't, I don't see any language in there regarding our attempts, you know, which now looks like, you know, where we granted the opportunity to purchase the Armory site. Always hopeful that, you know, that the, one of, that perhaps Fine Arts Academy could become something else. And that function could, you know, could go to one of the other campuses, since I, you know, this Jean would know I'm an avid supporter of the Fine Arts Academy. But I don't think it necessarily needs to be in its current physical place. Do we have anything in here about the city's desire to, you know, like say, develop the, the Armory site and/or other sites in the downtown area?
I'm not sure we have specific policies to talk about those. And it's, it's certainly an option, we could develop those policies if we don't have them. And currently on the draft map, I think those sites are shown as public because of what they are today.
Right.
And I think it's been brought up that they could be shown as something else, just downtown commercial. And you can do that, which sort of encapsulates that, you know, future desire.
I'm not, yeah, I'm not looking at that, because I mean, ultimately, we purchased the Armory, it's public until then, until such time as we would try to perhaps sell it to do something else. But we might want to keep it public and use it for a public purpose.
And actually, the Armory property on here is actually shown as downtown commercial already. I was referring to the Fine Arts Academy that's shown as public, but the Armory is shown as downtown commercial.
Right, and, and we, and I understand why that occurred. Okay, all right, can we go back now to the Silla map? Get to that question. Oh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I forgot. We had a request to go ahead and take a bathroom break after the public comment, and I forgot. Sorry, Councilmember. So, yeah, let's take a brief bathroom break since we concluded public comment. And then I can come back and ask some more questions. Let's see, the time is 8:22. Let's reconvene at 8:30. Seth was being nice and... Okay. Okay, otherwise I could let you talk now. I'll just postpone. Okay, we're going to reconvene. Councilmember Newsom has to depart very shortly, so I'm going to suspend my questioning and turn it over to her for comments or questions.
Appreciate it, thank you. And I appreciate the staff's work that they've done on trying to pull this together and try to give us as much information as absolutely possible. So I know it's always entertaining to try to match up color coding with designations on the changes. Some notes that I took that I'd like to have on record would be non-city maintained roads. I think that's been brought up a couple of times. I'd like to see that brought back at a future council meeting to discuss the specifics on that or strategic planning. Density, I know we had several folks speak and also sent us emails about the increases in density. I always want to make sure that we're staying...
So I can start again on my left with Councilmember Peak.
Yeah, I think I'm in agreement to some of Heather's comments before she had to leave, and then some of yours in terms of the stark transition from multifamily to residential. You know, they have the yellow, the yellow urban residential is kind of funny, anyway, because a lot of the houses through this whole hillside, the San Benito neighborhood on next door, however you label that area. They're all like, everyone's got animals, everyone's got, it feels rural, it doesn't feel like you're in an urban, you're subject to SB nine. It seems weird to think that you could put a fourplex in your backyard, like we're San Diego County, with all these fourplexes going up in my dad's neighborhood. It's the same law. So I think the stark transition from seemingly, like, the, the visual of this neighborhood is more rural than it is urban SFR. So I think that's just something that's important to me, is to have less of a impact along this block from, you know, from the mixed-use triple-seven property, and then the lots right now that have all the tractor equipment stored on it, next door to that, leading up to Uva. I think Uva's the, the furthest north cul-de-sac that's mostly bold and right before San Benito, I'm pretty sure. That whole area in there, I think just needs to be reevaluated in terms of its transition from El Camino to the, what I would call more rural properties in town, even though they are designated as urban, just because of the locality of where they are. So I think that I would be agreeable to revisiting those areas, as well as on the west side of the 101, starting on the San Ramon-Berel Creek side, down towards the Church of Latter-day Saints, big parcel in the, on the south. Reevaluating whether or not mixed-use with some residential component through there, or at least some of it potentially to ease on the traffic side, but also you could recoup some of the housing elements that maybe you will glean from higher-density areas and be able to have that option in areas like that, because the Beryl Creek project is going to be a cool little hub with restaurants and, you know, frivolity, neighborhood, merry-making, you know, hopefully. So we could have a walking area where people living, working, walk across the bridge, go to the grocery store, I mean, there's, this whole area is going to be like the north gate of Atascadero, you know? I'm not sure if that's coined, but now we just coined it. And I just think that those are the two areas that on the, on the north end that I'm concerned with, and I think that also, you know, when I moved to, I bought my first house in Atascadero, I was a renter before, but 2014 over by Chalk Mountain, and then a year after that, a year or two after that, this is before the Quickie Car Wash was built, they had plans for the mixed-use over there. And I also have my, my, my previous tenancy for my painting company was over by, across the street from West Coast Towing, and that area of El Camino is super sketchy, both for pedestrian and for traffic and for collisions, and, you know, we've seen car accidents there quite often at the principal, that area between the traffic light that is Palomar all the way to Santa Rosa, you know, you get up to rapid speeds and what, it's, you know, it's not lost on anybody that, that, there's a couple of sections of road that are like that. So I think that adding in the element of that many more residents, residents bring nighttime traffic, they bring after-dinner traffic, they bring a lot of different traffic components to that, that area of town that's already a bad traffic area in terms of safety and speed. I think adding a multifamily of that magnitude right there just brings a whole other host of issues in terms of traffic patterns in that area, whereas I think something like a mixed-use project, and I understand it's zoned what it is now, but just higher level, it just seems like that area, it just seems like a very bad idea to put massive, like, amounts of housing right there in an area that is basically surrounded by commercial, you got red on the right, you got red on the left, you got innovation flex above it, and, you know, perhaps that could be an innovation flex area, just, or mixed-use. I like innovation flex with mixed-use, I like lofts, I like, you know, that, I like that idea, you know? If I was not married, I would live in one, but I, I live in a married house. I live in my wife's house, so I'm just saying that that's another area I think we should reevaluate, and I think I was hearing the mayor's say that maybe he, he thinks that too, but maybe I was misreading him, but those are the three areas on this. The rest of, the rest of this, I mean, we talked about different areas like Navajoa, Sarah, these multifamily areas, and you have seen, since I've lived here on Navajoa, someone buys a lot, they put a triplex behind a house, you know, every six lots, you'll see somebody do that every three or four years, so it's not just like this boom overnight where everybody's raising these houses and putting up these, these sixplexes. So I think that that area is, you know, even though it's gotten a little more dense, I, I'm not worried about that neighborhood becoming just like a metropolis along moral road on the left and the right, but I do also have the concerns with putting a T-111 cube on a property overlooking these, you know, a nice little neighborhood on Marchant or on some of these other roads, but I'm also not the type of person to tell people what their house should look like. So that's, that's something that I'm probably not going to die on that hill. But yeah, so I think the Ramona Road, Beryl Creek area, the principal area, and the, the north San Benito neighborhood, Cia Road, Uva, Marco, that whole conglomeration, I think we should revisit some of the densities or some of the zoning in those areas.
All right, thank you, Mayor Protim Daris.
Thank you. I'm not going to take up too much time, I, I agree with most of what was said, I think the mayor summarized most of what we were discussing already and the concerns. One of the things that I wanted to comment on, and thank you to Councilmember Funk for bringing up the non-city maintained roads, and I think Councilmember Newsom brought it up as well, that's something that was always important to me too, and I'd like to see somehow that get addressed and be something that can be rectified in the near future as, as best we can. But a question I had on some of these, these new, new zoning areas where we've increased the density, and currently there, maybe there's existing streets already, whether they're maintained or not, or there's areas that have paper streets, so they're, they're not developed with streets, but there is a, a right-of-way that's designated in, in these areas, and if we increase the density, then these right-of-ways, I would imagine, are going to have to get wider. How does, how is that going to be addressed in the future? Because it's going to take a bite out of these lots, and if, and if it's, if the single-family residences happen to be on one side of the street, are they going to bite into that? Or who, how, how is it going to get addressed if a right-of-way needs to go from fifty to seventy-five feet?
Actually, a lot of the right-of-ways are wide enough, just the developed road isn't as wide as the right-of-way, so they would have to be improved as development comes along. We don't see instances where we would have to acquire additional right-of-way to accommodate the density we're proposing, and I think that's where you're going at, after that. But again, that level of detailed analysis wouldn't occur until we get a development proposal that comes forward that really changes the density of that area, and then we have to evaluate that on a case-by-case basis.
Okay, because I, I just think back to the Walmart when that was going to be developed, and that was, became a traffic nightmare on how we were going to handle that, and if we take areas like up around San Benito where we're, we're adding a significant amount of density compared to what it is now, I would, I don't know, I mean, El Camino Real probably wouldn't be negatively affected necessarily, but any connector streets in between certainly could be, you don't want a little teeny-tiny, you know, two-lane road that's going to have multifamily on both sides of it, that would just be a nightmare.
Possibly, I mean, when Walmart came along, it was a whole different animal. I mean, the amount of trips that were anticipated with that really excited the heck out of the traffic engineers. So that's a whole different level. And, I mean, there are, like I said, as each project comes along, we have to analyze the intensity of that project, each project comes along with a traffic analysis, and those improvements subsequently follow, kind of chronologically with that. This general plan's not going to pencil everything out to that level. It's going to generally say where these land uses should go, it's going to generally prescribe mobility improvements, but it's not going to get to the level of, hey, we're going to see this, this development here, so it needs to respond in this particular way. Each project is responsible for doing that on their own as, as it evolves.
Okay, so just to summarize for me, I think my biggest concern is the, is the increase in density next to single-family residences, how we can, can minimize that or lessen it, as, as the mayor said, have maybe single-family, but with a higher density instead of the low-density, because as I mentioned during my time, you know, it might be twelve units per acre, but as you said, with the half-units or fractional units and bonus densities, it could, it could be a lot more, and I don't, you know, we went through this at, at the south end of town, Santa, Santa Barbara, Dove Creek Development, where the houses that are existing now across the street from that, there were going to be three-story units right across the street, and that just didn't seem right, it was, I mean, it was going to be significantly taller, and I'd hate to see that happen in other areas of town as well. So if we can at least focus on something like that, come up with a, a way to make it more compatible. Thank you.
Thanks, a couple of comments on that. I believe several months ago, one of our sessions, Councilmember Funk did bring up the issue, certainly of non-city maintained streets, but also not upzoning on non-city maintained streets, because they're, you know, they're pretty bad. This map, and I'm thinking particularly in this triangle area that is up on the screen right now, did we, none of these are non-city maintained? I mean, I realize Amapoah is non-city, that's kind of out of what we're talking in terms of changes. We didn't, this map doesn't propose to upzone properties on non-city maintained streets, correct?
Does not, and that's why there's islands of yellow and the orange.
Gotcha, gotcha, okay, I recall that. In regards to the non-city maintained streets, I, I'd like to keep it simple, but I, but I agree with, generally with the concept that perhaps in the mobility element, we simply add a statement that the city would explore, you know, the possibility or avenues for addressing non-city maintained streets and the possibility of somehow bringing them into the system. I wouldn't want to say that it is, would be our policy to do so, because obviously there's a, there's a huge financial commitment in doing that that we would not want to make. There's, there's a reason why they're, as unusual as they might seem to other communities, there are reasons why we have non-city maintained streets, but would it, you know, perhaps, would it be appropriate to just add a simple sentence that the city would explore the possibility or consider avenues for bringing non-city maintained streets into the system?
Yeah, I think we can work on some language and bring some thought back.
Language of that effect, okay.
I think what we need to work on too is, is a chart. It shows you where the city of Atascadero ranks in terms of its mileage of roads, its revenue, its population, and where we rank in California, it's pretty, it's very, very challenging where we're at. I think our Assistant City Manager might want to weigh into a little bit, it's a very sticky topic, that's all I'll say.
Well, that's why we were only...
But at the pleasure of council, of course, we
the north San Benito neighborhood, Sea Road, Buva, Marco, that whole conglomeration, I think we should revisit some of the densities or some of the zoning in those areas.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Protim Daris.
Thank you. Uh, I'm not going to take up too much time. I, I agree with most of what was said. I think the mayor summarized most of what we were discussing already and the concerns. One of the things that I wanted to comment on, thank you to Councilmember Funk for bringing up the non-city maintained roads. And I think Councilmember Newsom brought it up as well. That's something that was always important to me too. And I'd like to see somehow that get addressed and be something that can be rectified in the near future as, as best we can. But a question I had on some of these, these new, uh, new zoning areas where we've increased the density. And currently there, maybe there's existing streets already, whether they're maintained or not. Or there's areas that have paper streets, so they're, they're not developed with streets much, but there is a a right of way that's designated in, in these areas. And if we increase the density, then these right of ways, I would imagine are going to have to get wider. How does, how is that going to be addressed in the future? Cause it's going to take a bite out of these lots. And if, and if it's, if the single family residences happen to be on one side of the street, are they going to bite into that? Or who, how, how is it going to get addressed? If a right of way needs to go from 50 to 75 feet?
Actually, a lot of the right of ways are, are wide enough, just the developed road isn't as wide as the right of way. So they would have to be improved as development comes along. We don't see instances where we would have to acquire additional right of way to accommodate the density we're proposing. And I think that's where you're going at, after that. But again, that level of detailed analysis wouldn't occur until we get a development proposal that comes forward that really changes the density of that area. And then we have to evaluate that on a case by case basis.
Okay. Cause I, I just, I just think back to the Walmart when that was going to be developed and that was, became a traffic nightmare on how we were going to handle that. And if we take areas like up around San Benito where we're, we're adding a, a significant amount of density compared to what it is now. I would, I don't know. I mean, El Camino Real probably wouldn't be negatively affected necessarily. But any connector streets in between certainly could be, you don't want a little teeny tiny, you know, two lane road that's going to have multifamily on both sides of it. That would just be a nightmare.
Possibly. I mean, when Walmart came along, it was a whole different animal. I mean, the amount of trips that were anticipated with that really excited the heck out of the traffic engineers. So that's a whole different level. And I mean, there are, like I said, as each project comes along, we have to analyze the intensity of that project. Each project comes along with a traffic analysis and those improvements subsequently follow kind of chronologically with that. This general plan is not going to pencil everything out to that level. It's going to generally say where these land uses should go. It's going to generally prescribe mobility improvements, but it's not going to get to the level of hey, we're going to see this, this development here. So it needs to respond in this particular way. Each project is responsible for doing that on their own as, as it evolves.
Okay. So just to summarize for me, I think my biggest concern is the, is the increase in density next to single family residences, how we can can minimize that or lessen it as, as the mayor said, have maybe single family, but with a higher density instead of the low density. Cause as I mentioned during my time, you know, it might be 12 units per acre, but like, as you said, with the half units or part, or fractional units and bonus densities, it could, it could be a lot more. And I don't, you know, we went through this at at, at the south end of town, Santa, Santa Barbara, uh, Dove Creek Development where the houses that are existing now across the street from that, there were going to be three story units right across the street. And that just didn't seem right. It was, I mean, it was going to be significantly taller. And I'd hate to see that happen in other areas of town as well. So if we can at least focus on something like that, come up with a, a way to make it more compatible. Thank you.
Thanks. A couple of comments on that. I, I believe several months ago, one of our sessions, Councilmember Funk did bring up the issue, certainly of non-city maintained streets, but also not upzoning on non-city maintained streets. Cause they're, you know, they're pretty bad. This map, and I'm thinking particularly in this triangle area that is up on the screen right now. Did we, none of these are non-city maintained? I mean, I realize Amapoah is non-city maintained. That's kind of out of what we're talking in terms of changes. We didn't, this map doesn't proponent, propose to upzone properties on non-city maintained streets, correct?
Does not. And that's why there's islands of yellow and the orange.
Gotcha. Gotcha. Okay. I recall that. In regards to the non-city maintained streets, I, I'd like to keep it simple, but I, but I agree with generally with the concept that perhaps in the mobility element, we simply add a statement that the city would explore, you know, uh, the possibility or avenues for addressing non-city maintained streets and the possibility of somehow bringing them into the system. I wouldn't want to say that it is, would be our policy to do so, because obviously there's a, there's a huge financial commitment in doing that, that we would not want to make. There's, there's a reason why they're as unusual as they might seem to other communities. There are reasons why we have non-city maintained streets. But would it, you know, perhaps, would it be appropriate to just add a simple sentence that uh, the city would explore the possibility or consider avenues for bringing non-city maintained streets into the system?
Yeah. I think we can work on some language and bring some thought back.
I think what we need to work on too is, is a chart. It shows you where the city of Atascadero ranks in terms of its mileage of roads, its revenue, its population and where we rank in California. It's pretty, it's a very, very challenging where we're at. I think, um, our assistant city manager might want to weigh into a little bit. It's a very sticky topic. That's all I'll say.
Well, that's why we were only
But at the pleasure of council, of course, we can add, you know, a soft language policy.
Go, go ahead, Laura.
Yeah. I would just say on this one, just because this is such a high level document, that something that is such a such a complex policy is really something I, and I think Councilmember Newsom was sort of alluding to that, that it is something that we should probably take outside of this policy for the level of discussion that we really need to have on it and for how council wants to start moving that forward or what that looks like, or how they're setting a work plan for staff to start looking to that because it is because of, I, I think, um, Councilmember Funk mentioned she's looking at more specific types of roads, potentially not all of the roads. That everybody sort of has an idea. And I think just because we are talking at such a high level, that even if we were sort of to try to craft some language, what would that look like? And are we only talking as neighborhoods are developed or redeveloped? We're talking about those roads? Are we talking about all the roads in general? I just think that in this one, it may be something that we bring back and talk about a policy outside of the general plan to start addressing. This hasn't been a policy that's existed in any of our general plan configurations before. And so this is one I did talk to, just so you know, I did, um, city manager Lewis and I did sort of discuss this a little bit as well. So.
I do think to be clear, we, we aren't talking about any new, you know, new roads, whatever, because new neighborhoods with new roads. You know, we require those to be pretty much self-maintained through HOAs or other mechanisms. This is more talking about, you know, E.G. Lewis designed and named roads that never got built or were built just with dirt and D.G. and, and potholes. And you know, that's what we're talking about. It seems to me that staff is a little uncomfortable with it. We, we could address it outside the general plan. I'm comfortable with doing that. I just, I tend to think of the general plan as, you know, as a vision and a statement of where we'd like the city to be. And, you know, at some point we need to address the issue. So I'm okay if we do it outside the general plan, but I don't think it's inappropriate to do so. But it sounds like staff's not super comfortable with us including something.
No, I would, I would just say because this is, I not, it, it is such a complex issue and it spans much more than just roadways that were, were built or not built, right? We're talking about roadways that potentially can never be brought into our system. We're talking about ability of, of financing, what that looks like for the city. So it is such a complex and complicated that I think this would be one that, that staff, because it does involve so many of our departments, it's such a intense topic to dive into that it would be something that staff would definitely be more comfortable and feel more appropriate to talk about separately. It's something we can put on for strategic planning or, you know, a workshop on it, but something more that we can delve into separate outside of developing because how, how then does that factor? And how do we explain that to the public as we move on for 20 years? What roads we do or don't?
I'm going to, I'm going to, I want to let Councilmember Funk comment. She's eager to comment on that, but I had one last thing I want to address. The comments we received from first five about, you know, incorporating more references to childcare. You know, they, they came up with some stuff in here that essentially added childcare to, I'll say about 20 different places. And I'm wondering if it would just be appropriate to add a more generic statement under either economic development or somewhere else that it's hard to achieve. It's hard to attract good, you know, new employers. It's hard to attract, you know, the, the kind of development we want without having adequate childcare, even though the city kind of has very little direct role in, in, you know, creating childcare. But I don't know that we need to change it in every, you know, every policy statement. I'm not sure what you guys are comfortable with, but I think it's something that's worth mentioning somewhere in the plan, not necessarily 20 times. So.
Yes. I think a clear statement could be more impactful than adding some, adding words in 20 or however.
Right. Okay. I would, for one, would like you to, you know, come up with something along those lines. Okay. I'm going to turn over Councilmember Funk for your comments on the roads and then your comments in general.
Yeah. Cause I did, I, I do have comments on other topics as well, but on the roads, um, and I hear staff, you know, being really uncomfortable about opening up the, this issue because it is complicated. It's costly. It, you know, it's difficult. It's an Achilles heel of our community. I do think that there is, it feels like we're being dishonest in our plan if we don't at least acknowledge that this problem exists and that it substantially constrains the development we can do. Right now, the only mention of non-maintained roads in the policy is the mention on page 114, if you look at the PDF that requires lower density development on non-maintained streets. But it says nothing about thinking about even imagining the idea that someday we might create some kind of pathway to help something happen so that they could get fixed. You know, that's, that's the level of being, this is, you know, it's complicated stuff, working with banking, working with legal, working with what can be done. But it, it clearly constrains the way our city can develop. Because we don't want to add more dense developments on these, you know, on pothole heaven streets where there's no workable legal mechanism to see that everybody who would benefit from that street improvement can pay into it, can have a way to make that workable and financeable. And so, you know, we, it constrains what we can do in this plan. And so I think we should, um, you know, we should acknowledge it. And I would feel better if we had a policy that is very general and explorational in nature, but this, that indicates that over the next 20 years, we want to think about that to the extent that it, that it constrains and impedes the development of the city. That would be my, my thought. So I, you know, I would weigh in, it's rare for me not to you know, seek to guidance from staff on that. But I think that it, I think we have to be clear to our community about that this is a challenge we face. And so have, and put that forward. Okay. We, enough, enough on that. I do, on the childcare, I think there are a few of these that are, are appropriate things. I do think it's important for us to acknowledge in general that, that childcare is an essential piece of infrastructure for the development of our community. The other important piece of infra, of, you know, non-public infrastructure for the development of the human side of our community that's not mentioned here are churches. Churches show up in this plan only to the extent to which maybe somebody might put a homeless person in there for a while. And that's churches that, that's an important land use. And I would like to see religious facilities at least acknowledged in the discussion of the kinds of land uses that concur in our quasi-public types of zoning or in, in ways that it is because we do need to have ways in which our community connects with one another. Some of those are parks. Some of those are, um, public facilities and some of those are religious facilities, you know, churches and synagogues and so forth. And I think we should note them. You know, that's, you know, as a church going person, and I know not everybody is, it just felt really missing. And missing to the character of our community. Okay. Um, some other things that I deferred until discussion. The the biggest one is, is as we think about, you know, over the course of 20 years, how are we going to manage the growth in demand and maybe need for parking and, and other things across parts of our community? And managing the impact of additional residents on, you know, streets and car flow. What I'd really like us to consider as an aspirational basis is aspiring to some kind of, of, or at least aspiring to exploring some kind of hop on, hop off trolley system up and down El Camino Real. This may not be affordable in my lifetime, but it might. It might be feasible at some point. And if we have that kind of connection, you can imagine what school pickup looks like. If a third of the kids coming out of the high school and the junior high school hop on a trolley and take it to their after school program or too close to where mom and dad work, or to a place where they can meet up with mom and dad that's not in the middle of downtown. So you don't have to drive in and have all of that. It could help make a lot of the traffic and, and flow things workable. So I would like to see that. And I could provide, you know, possible language, but just cease to aspire to considering that. With regard to yeah, that's probably in, uh, mobility 5.1 or 5.2. Also, and, and considering something that also that would connect the lake and zoo area and the, and the community center. You know, the little like T bars there. If we think of something that that we can use to potentiate land uses. Okay. Um, other things. On the minor side, could we, it, um, consider a policy of facilitating the allowance of partially off-grid homes? That
That's mentioned in there, I believe.
It's actually, I did not see off-grid homes in, in there. If I missed that, and I, and I thought that that might be, um, an encouragement. I was looking at page 120 PSI 6.2 as being a place where that might be mentioned. And if it's already meant, if it's already covered, then you don't need to add it again. But if it's, if it's not already covered, if my colleagues are comfortable, it would be nice to envision that potential. They're not a ton of people that are going to want to do that, but some might. I would sorry, I'm going through my things as I get notes as I get them. Okay. I'd like us to talk about in terms of, of where, as we're dealing with undergrounding of utilities, which is something mentioned in the PSI 1.3 and private utilities. And we're looking at resilience of our grid that we might want to consider add a policy to consider establishing mechanisms to finance undergrounding for meaningful sections of utilities. Cause the way this works now, you have a property owner and, and all kinds of Atascadero properties have little narrow street fronts and deep lots. And so the property owner says, oh, and you want me to underground this little piece here from here to here? And if it's not done when the property develops, then there isn't the money to pay for it later. And if it's done when the property and, and if it's done when the property develops, you know, oh goody, we got another hundred feet of undergrounded utilities against between two poles and take it back above ground again. And maybe, you know, and it may be 10 years or 15 years before the, you know, something meaningful happens. Something that other cities are doing, and I talked about this with staff is you know, put essentially instead of having somebody underground their own utilities, put some money into a fund in lieu. And then the city can, when you get a section that's workable and the time is right, you can do a meaningful section of undergrounding in a way that is cost efficient. And has an impact.
Is all that just to say, we, we should have a statement in there that says we will pursue undergrounding? I believe it's mentioned, undergrounding is mentioned at least once in this general, but I mean, essentially you're saying it should be essentially our policy to try to underground where possible.
Well, but what I'm looking for is actually not, that right now we have the requirement
I understand, but I mean, that's a level of detail. That's a level of detail. I don't think we're going to find or put in the general plan. That would be like a, a way of you know, we put in the plan that, you know, we seek to underground utilities where possible. And then we develop you know, more details of how we might fund that. Like you say, we could have a, you know, we could have put some upfront and have people pay us back or, or have people put money into a, a fund. And then, you know, when you accumulate enough, you underground some. But those are like mechanics and details at a level I don't think we would, you know, put in the general plan.
Yeah. What, well, but what we, what I'm looking for is to give businesses some flexibility and give residents some flexibility in how these are done so that we can make these changes more meaningful and impactful.
Understand, but I mean, we're not going to develop that level of, that degree of detail in terms of providing flexibility. We could simply say that, you know, it's our goal to underground utilities and we'll look for options to, that would enable us to promote that faster than currently occurs. I mean, is something like that viable for staff? Something simple. Because I want to avoid trying to get into prescriptive answers and how we're going to do something, these things, but simply agree that yes, we'd like to see that happen.
I'm, I'm watching, I'm, yeah, I'm watching staff because they're over there. It does seem appropriate to the level of detail that I saw currently in there, but I don't have access to the language of the plan right now to pull up what, what is, that I was looking at.
There is already a policy in the general plan, in the draft general plan that does speak to all new, new utilities going underground. We already have that in our municipal code as well, but I think what you're alluding to is the bigger picture of existing utilities and funding that undergrounding of larger pieces of infrastructure and just having a visionary statement that goes that direction. And I think we can draft something for your view at a later date.
That would be helpful if you're, the mayor, if you're comfortable with that.
And, and your guys are comfortable with in a general statement of
I thought there was already an undergrounded policy.
There is already a policy. It's already in the municipal code for new utilities. There's no idea about how that would be funded. Right now it's privately funded by new development.
Right. Okay.
Right. And I'm just looking to see if it can be funded, consider something that might be more flex to, might be more flexible so that we can make it more, um, cost efficient and more meaningful. Um, I want to, on a couple of other things with regard to the, um, land use on San Marone, Ramon that we were talking about, I do think it would be appropriate to have that be mixed use as opposed to in, uh, innovation flex in that section there, um, at least along the San Marone, Ramon next to, um, Apple Valley. It's these interfaces we have between one land use and another are always where we struggle. And it is all over this city because of the physical configuration of where developables, developable space is in this city. It's in the narrow band along our two main arteries. And so there is not a piece of, there's hardly a commercial property in the city that isn't a stone's throw from residential properties of some kind. And those kinds of, let alone, you know, different levels, there's multifamily that's going to be near. It's going to be near a single family because you have, uh, those abutments and that this, so it's, so we struggle with that. I think it's also given the neighborhood concerns that we don't have to go quite as aggressive in this section that you're looking at right now on the screen on El Camino, that we could back off from that as other council members have suggested. And allow in the center of that section, you know, the areas between San Benito Road and just north of Santa Anselmo, um, that we're not necess, we don't have to have deep, um, multifamily at this level that, you know, orange along the street maybe and, and some yellow behind effectively, uh, would be fine with me. I'd like to see staff look at that and see what's workable in terms of what we think we're going to need. And what we might need to have to accommodate in, um, the next general, uh, housing element cycle.
To, to get consensus on that. I, I mean, I heard you mention having more or less orange on El Camino and then yellow where the orange is. I, I think well, I think, I mean, I was okay with the brown for the most part, although I'm wondering on some of those third layer although I'm wondering on some of those third-layer things, especially upon La Uva and Marco or whatever, concerned about going that far back with the brown. But I was interested in making the orange essentially yellow, but at a, you know, a quarter acre density, if you will, higher than one acre density than the current one acre, but not multifamily where the orange is. And I felt like that was acceptable over here on the left. Is it correct?
The yellow is definitely where, the direction I would go for the orange. There's a couple lots along El Camino, there's like the Church of Christ, there's like some that are like right along El Camino that would be, you know, if someone wanted, if there was going to be a brown area, the ones that are right on El Camino, that are the bigger lots. I know patchwork along there is probably not going to work either, but I think, I think keeping the SFR instead of, instead of the orange, especially, you know, Marco, Sia, Uva, all those, all those ones that go up into those neighborhoods, keeping that SFR, knowing full well that somebody under state guidelines could put more, I mean, the residents would know that, that it's no different than what they can do now, right?
Right, understand.
What did you mean by adding more density to an SFR?
Well, I mean, right now, it's only one acre minimum. And I'm saying that as a transition from those multifamilies that, multifamily that we're talking about that would front El Camino, as a transition, you, you know, it would be okay to allow more density than one, one per acre.
So you're saying that you can make, you can make a lot split on an SFR to like four quarter acre lots?
Right, or two half acre lots or something. I don't think it needs to be one acre to provide that kind of buffer. But I don't want it to be multifamily, because I think that's too much right up against those existing neighbors.
I agree with that.
Okay.
Question. First of all, the yellow single-family residential, does that presume one acre minimum lot?
No.
So the yellow single-family residential is a general plan designation that when we adopt zoning, will be broken down into perhaps up to four different zoning districts, one being a quarter acre, one being a half acre, one being one acre, and maybe even one more. So you could have that be single-family as, on the general plan map, and when we get to zoning, then you can break it down into whatever's appropriate for that particular neighborhood.
I think that's great, because that allows us to say, no, keep our guidance tonight, make it yellow, make the orange yellow along Sia. When we get to this specific zoning, we'll talk about, you know, half, quarter, one, whatever.
Okay, thank you.
I think we've heard that loud and clear that, and we'll redesignate that area and bring a draft back to you in terms of changing that medium density along El Camino to a low-density multifamily for the frontage lots, and then transitioning back to single-family residential as we get two or more lots back off of El Camino for the area south of San Benito. Because the area north of San Benito is already multifamily today, we can't take that away. It's already being developed that way as well.
Got it, okay, thank you.
And I'm just wondering if, if, if part of this issue might not be height limitations? Because I mean, what I'm hearing from the neighbor, neighbors, and these are fairly sloped lots, is suddenly, you don't want to wake up and suddenly have a four-story building right, you know, over your backyard if there is the opportunity to not have that happen. And in part, so can we, is part of having these various multifamily designations, can we set height limits on them that might be selective as to how close they are to single-family or, you know, other kinds of things, considerations?
You absolutely can do that, and we'll do that at the zoning level.
Okay, great. Let's keep that up in mind, because that, that can be a way that we manage some of these transitions that are hard. Okay. That, it'll help, okay. And then with regard to principle, I'd be comfortable with either a mixed-use approach or a, something that's not quite as intense, a multifamily, a lower, medium-density multifamily and like, you know, the kinds of things we see on Santa Isabel and all of those areas around there.
We'll develop a couple of options for that area. What we can't do is take away its multifamily designation that it has today. That's where we get in trouble with the state. We can keep it the same as it is, which is basically a low-density multifamily, or we could do a mixed-use designation, as long as it has the same residential designation to it that allows for the same number of units. So we can look at a couple of those options, but I think what I'm hearing, and if there's consensus from the council, that you don't want to see high density at that area or a high building height at that area. And the reason it became a multifamily project in the first place is because it doesn't really, it's a strange property configuration, it doesn't really have a lot of frontage on a, on a road, and it's tucked back there, and its isolation is what lent it to being a multifamily designation rather than a commercial designation.
Yeah, and I, I also recall, having been on the council when that was approved, that the part of the selling point was a mixed-use with commercial on the commercial strip, with the idea being you'd have this nice housing development with residents serving commercial, and, you know, you'd have the coffee shop or, you know, whatever there. And I was really disappointed to see a car wash developed there, because that's not serving the walkability of that neighborhood by definition. And it sort of defeated the purpose of having it be mixed-use up there. So...
But I think we have consensus on, Mr. Dunsmore reiterated, and I think we have consensus on that, so, okay.
Okay, so we're good on that. I think that takes care of the larger things we needed to weigh in on it. And... Yeah.
Charles?
I think, yeah.
We, Councilwoman Funk brought up the San Ramon. Are we, are we the only two that are, that are interested in looking at San Ramon, Ramona flex zones?
Could you go to that mount with San Ramon on it? It's good, very good question. My concern is, and I think staff had this concern about converting, you know, commercial or flex-based properties, you know, in essence, but probably ending up with more residential. These have always been zoned some form of commercial, correct?
No, they're public.
Public, I'm sorry.
Public.
They're public, because they're mostly churches.
Wouldn't say always, but in, in my city lifetime, which is a decade.
So, so flex is a change from what they've been, but so would residential be a change from what they've been?
Correct, yes.
Residential, but I mean, it's been a public... That would allow residential, I mean, if part of the thing is, is a buffer, if you will, I am a little, kind of less concerned about that for Apple Valley, because Apple Valley was created out of whole cloth, it was residential suburban. It's a neighborhood that was plopped in there, allowed, you know, created by the city council. You know, none of those homes would be there if the council hadn't upzoned the area. So I don't, I don't feel compelled to, you know, always say, oh, boy, you know, they need a transition zone, or they need a buffer. But if we're going to talk about doing that in a mixed-use, these lots are deep enough, I think, that if you're going to do that with that in mind, it would be in a horizontal mixed-use fashion perhaps, where, you know, if I'm looking over the back fence from Apple Valley, that's where I'm going to see a house, but that the front part on San Ramon itself would be, or on Ramona, would, you know, be some form of commercial enterprise.
That seems to be appropriate for that area. One issue we have with that spot, and I think part of the reason it became this innovation flex, because one of the land uses there is problematic adjacent to housing, and that's the Woods Humane Society, if they choose to start bringing dogs into that location and apply for a use permit to do that, you know, that could be problematic. But that may be problematic to the Apple Valley as it is anyway, so that may not happen, but just a thought. And it's why this came to be.
But they're, they're, they're there under a conditional use permit that allowed cats, but not dogs, right?
That's for now, yes.
Right, but I mean, if they came in, I mean, we would have a bunch of Apple Valley neighbors here saying, we don't want to listen to barking dogs all the time. And, and we would, you know, we or whoever's on council at the time would, you know, act...
Exactly.
Act or not act, you know, based on that. So I'm saying their existence there doesn't, well, perhaps unusual, doesn't muddy the water going forward per se. So, I mean, if, if you want to do mixed-use there, I would look at it as horizontal mixed-use most likely.
Yeah, yeah, horizontal for sure, but also you, you know, if there's a way you can say, I don't know, if currently mixed-use, there's a percentage, you know, 75 commercial, 75 or 25, history major.
Those are, those are the zoning standards that we'll be developing for the flex or for the mixed-use zones. We're doing that now. And I think we're going to come up with three different mixed-use zones, one that's all vertical, one that has a higher percentage, and one that has some horizontal, along those lines.
Yeah.
And Councilmember Funk, I think you alluded to the nor, making that change to the northern part that is above whatever the name of that little street is that leads into the southern part of Apple Valley.
Those, those lots, they're the innovation flex, and I don't mean to jump on your comment, but the ones that are next to Beryl Creek, there is no street to get to those violet areas. That, those are back lots behind, like the Griffin House is one of the orange...
Yeah, no, I understand, but that's part of, you know, the already-approved Beryl Creek project, if you will. I'm talking about the ones lower down here, next to Apple Valley.
Oh, the Quonset Hut area.
Yeah, well, no, Quonset area is over there, I mean, over to the left. I'm talking these ones, no, I know, I'm just talking about the ones on Ramona. Yeah, where he's got the arrow right there, and then there's a street there. And I'm forgetting the name of that street, Canaho or something. And then, and there's these, these four lots south of there. And the question in my mind would be, Councilmember Funk, you mentioned this, are you only talking about changing the flex to mixed on the ones that abut Apple Valley? Or are you talking about all eight or nine lots there?
I'm thinking that you could just the ones next to Apple Valley, that I think there's room for, for innovation flex there, right next to the freeway, and, you know, between the freeway and that creek there.
Right, I mean, I, my initial thought was to only do those four, but on the other hand, it's like, if we're going to do it, make the...
Two of those lots right now are vacant, the largest one being the Church of Latter-day Saints. I can't imagine they're going anywhere anytime soon. Then there's the A-Frame House is the one on the corner of Canaho.
Right.
The Swiss Chalet looking house. And then there's a vacant lot south of that, and then the vacant lot south of, oh, no, there's a house south of the church that, right before the creek goes through there. So there's only one vacant lot, I think, in that whole block.
And I would be comfortable if the, if staff wanted to talk a little further with neighbors in a particular area and help refine exactly what that usage looks like, but it doesn't necessarily need to be the innovation flex if that's going to be uncomfortable.
I think we've heard enough to go and do some additional analysis on this area and understand that we want a better transition, and that it should be generally mixed-use. So I think we can go forward with that.
Sounds good.
And take a look at that, thank you.
I've got two other things.
Okay, two others.
Yeah, sorry. They, I found that page in my notes that I missed, and that's in recreation-type areas. Would, what about allowing for recreation uses in the ag place type? We don't have a ton of ag land, but one of the things that we've struggled with is, where can we find some, you know, allow for some land that, you know, the kids who want to ride dirt bikes could maybe do that when they're, where they're not tearing up the watershed and messing with our water supply.
You want to tear up the Christmas tree farm?
Yeah, whatever, you know.
It's the only ag zone we have in the city, or at least I thought so. Apparently, there's one in a dinky parcel somewhere.
And I, one of the things I've been looking at is that there's, there's some lag, and I don't know if this is currently ag, but, you know, it's an area down below those high-power, high-intensity power lines right at the north of town. Some of it's in the county, some of it's in the city, but that might be an area where you could allow for some, you know, outdoor recreation that might...
That location's already being proposed for recreation. Right now, it's actually outside of the city, a big portion of it. And it's, it's in our sphere of influence to potentially be annexed if the property owner wants to do that. But it's not ag right now, it's actually an open space or other designation that sits outside the city. But it is proposed on the bigger map here to be, if I go to that map, it is proposed to be one of the recreation zones, so it's hard to see in this one. Yeah, it's shown as, is conservation parks, but it's really a parks area. It's got the red stripes on it way up there. And it, we can't zone it because it's not in the city limits right now, believe it or not.
Yeah, okay. But, you know, it did... Ah, yes, but it's also, I'm also wondering if, since we don't have that much ag, if we can consider allowing outdoor recreation in those ag zones. It wouldn't necessarily have to be.
And I think the only ag zone we have is the Christmas tree farm area or some area along Graves Creek. And then there's one way south into town by the railroad tracks, but I'm... We'd have to take a close look at that. We'll take that comment, and we'll analyze that to see what can happen.
See if there's any there there, and otherwise, don't worry about it. The other recreation thing is, can we set criteria for Eagle Ranch, which is in our, in sphere of influence, but not within the city limits, but is talked about in this plan?
We do have a couple of policies to talk about this area, Eagle Ranch, and if, if the council wants to add to those policies, we can do that. Again, keep in mind that if anything moves forward with that property that goes towards annexation in the community, we will also have to draft an entire specific plan for it. And at that time, we'll get into it, you know, in-depth policy analysis. But if there's some high-level direction or visionary direction that's missing in our general plan now, we could do that. Our current general plan speaks of this area, has three policies on it. Our proposed general plan has a couple policies on it about how this should be handled. But if there's things like, hey, we should make sure that we have a trail connection from X to Y, you know, that could be something that we have as a visionary statement.
We could, but I mean, clearly, you know, something of that size or magnitude, you know, is going to require a great deal of contemplation and, and, you know, action on our part and staff's part. You know, the general plan addresses it in terms of, obviously, it's got to pay for its own way fiscally. You know, we're going to have to make, make arrangements with the county, et cetera, et cetera. And those are the most important aspects, I think, of the potential for Eagle Ranch at this point in time. We would end up, you know, having meeting, multiple meetings on any action relative to Eagle Ranch. And I don't know that trying to address it now in the general plan would be particularly useful at this point.
What I, what I was looking to do as part of Land Use Policy 1.8, which is on page 55 of the PDF, I don't know what the exact text is, but just simply include providing trail connections to Los Padres National Forest and the Santa Margarita Ranch, so that we think about as we're looking at mobility around our thing, that we make sure that, that anything that happens there maintains the kind of connectedness that we're looking to see for our equestrians and others.
It sounds good, I just don't see the need to do it now. I mean, you know, I certainly know that's one of the things, it was one of the things that was talked about in prior iterations of Eagle Ranch proposals. It's certainly something I think everybody'd be very interested in. I just don't know that there's a percentage, I don't, I don't know. What do you guys think on the left here? Yeah, for talking about trails and through trails and stuff.
I think when a serious proposal comes forward to develop that Eagle Ranch, this is all going to get discussed, no point in doing it twice.
Councilmember Peak?
I'm in a position to really, I'm in a position to really have an opinion on it right now in terms of what I've looked into.
Maybe I'm getting fatigued, but I kind of just feel like this is not something we need to go into now.
So we have, you know, some interest in the policy, but not necessarily into the plan, the language of the plan.
But did I hear a motocross park in Eagle Ranch, Susan?
That's right, that'll do me.
Okay, all right, staff, you have what you need from us. Any lingering questions on your part that we need to answer?
I think Kelly's got some clarifications that she'd like to make on some consensus on some items.
I'll hop in. I think a couple of things that we heard that we didn't hear from everybody were some visioning policy for... visioning policy for Fine Arts Academy property and the armory.
I, well, yeah, I mean, I brought that up. If you don't think it's necessarily helpful, I just thought, I mean, part of our vision in downtown is to purchase the armory site. And I, you know, I think we'd like to see, you know, the, the school property ultimately become available for other uses.
I think we could add some policy languages. There's consensus on, on that.
Is there, am I object to saying is that, just say that, you know, the city intends to purchase the armory property and use it for something and as part of.
Use it for something.
Is part of the overall, overall, you know.
That we're not selling it to someone else.
No, no. And that the city, you know, also sees the possibility of, of downtown school site becoming available for.
And we can come up with some language that is obviously not specific to those sites, but allows for integration into the downtown if they were to change ownership or use.
And obviously, we don't want to get, you know, deep in the school district's business, but the point is, we, I mean, there was a time when we, as a city, didn't particularly want this, the school district to redevelop the junior high where they did, you know, but rather have it move out towards Del Rio, that sort of thing. Obviously, they're an independent decision-making body and they did what they did, but I don't think it would hurt for the city to express its interest in that property.
Yeah, I would encourage us to talk with the school district before we place in our general plan, the idea that we want to, you know, by the way, we'd like to, you know, stand up on your properties. I just, but if, but if the language is vague enough that it's like, should this become available, the city would have an interest in, in that.
Yes.
You know, it's, it's, it's speculative like the Eagle Ranch, but I'm willing to go with that if that's something that you want.
It's just a generic comment. Doesn't have to be there. I'm just saying that, you know, we, in general terms, have an interest in that property.
I would, in, in terms of the armory, we're not saying anything beyond the fact that we are purchasing it and will be using it for city purposes. We're not going to be leasing it or promising to lease it to anybody like a school.
I wouldn't think so.
At this moment.
Wouldn't think so, but I mean, we'll have to discuss what we do with the property once we own the property, but, right.
Is there anything in the zoning, in the general plan category of those properties that would preclude us from being free to make decisions that, you know, consistent with what you're seeing, you're hearing here?
The Fine Arts Academy is currently zoned public, and so if that ever dropped out of, you know, state school district control, we would be looking at a general plan amendment for that anyways, but we could add some vague guidance language in there to just explore integration into downtown and adjacent uses when that time comes.
And I, I wouldn't want to change its designation without chatting with the school district first.
Yeah. And so just to summarize a couple other, and we can just maybe nod some heads, or if anybody has major objections, we can, we can object. We have, we're going to explore some childcare language, visioning for fine arts and armory. We're going to bring back some discussion on non-city maintained roads and truck routes and how we can address that best. Acknowledge religious facilities in the place types. I think we can do that. Add some more language specifically facilitating allowances for off-grid homes or partially off-grid homes, and maybe bringing back some language to explore financing of undergrounding of existing utilities.
Sounds like you're, you've got what you need from us?
Yes, there was just one more that we just want to nod on, changing some of the hotel language to, when we support existing hotels, it's not just for renovation, but more vague language for a multitude of things that we could do to support not only new hotels, but existing hotels on occupancy.
Okay, anybody object? Okay, got it. Okay, all right. Very good. This has been a long one, but like I said, like I said earlier, we only do this every 20 to 25 years, so it was going to take a while. Thank you all. Now, yeah, the, yeah, I don't think any, any of us will be here for the next general plan update. Okay, so at this point in time, we will proceed to council announcements and committee reports. I'll start on my right with Councilmember Funk.
I don't have, there's, I don't have anything exciting going on in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, no wonder why we do have a IWA meeting coming up. We had, we hosted the county mayor's roundtable at the rooftop on Cielo and had pizza and salad, so that worked out very nice. Nothing really of note to report, but it was a good session. We had our speaker from the League of Cities Legislative Office talked about an update on all of the things that have, you know, that, all of the bills that were signed by the governor after the legislative session. Of course, of key interest to us was the bill that directed the military department to dispose of seven or eight armories, including ours, so we're very happy about that. There was a discussion that Assemblymember Ratus's bill passed that would enable or direct the addition of 10 new liquor licenses in, in Slow County. No, no clarity on how those 10 will be allocated, and so that remains to be seen. And separately, I, you know, we've done police, you've all done police ride-alongs or fire ride-alongs. Last week I did a garbage truck ride-along, and it was very interesting. You guys might want to consider trying it sometime, so. And I think that's it. Mayor Protimderas?
I've had a quiet couple of weeks and not much coming up, so I have nothing to report.
Councilmember Peak?
Councilwoman Newsom and I had the pleasure of meeting with Tom Bennett, our superintendent, for the first time, prior to our city schools committee meeting next month, I think next month, more formal meeting. So we had a nice sit-down. Assistant City Manager Laura was there and we got to meet him, got to hear a little bit about his plans for the school district and all that fun stuff, and looking forward to it.
Very good, thank you. Any individual determinations? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all. For some reason, it feels like it's 11 o'clock. It's only 9:20, 9:40. Oh, well, yeah, I mean, last week I tended with the city manager, Board of Supervisors meeting where they discussed and ultimately decided to put out to bid an RFP for ambulance services. All the city managers spoke in favor of putting it out to an RFP, as Councilmember Funk also spoke. And so that was kind of the outcome.
All the higher chiefs in the county spoke.